Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City of Delray Beach's Regular Commission Meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 14th, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. Please call the roll. Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Bolston?
President.
Ms. Burns?
Here.
Mayor Petrollia?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. At the agenda approval, any changes, additions, substitutions? I have one.
No.
I would like to move six and two to the regular agenda. That just involves a lease apparatus, and I'm not willing to vote for it. So if that was the only reason why, no other reason.
All right. Sounds good.
Okay, so we'll make that seven AA. Otherwise, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes.
Two half-seconds to make a whole. There you go. Presentation, we have the Top 10 Digital Cities Award, and I guess Gina's gonna come up, and Jay?
Yes.
Very good. Tell us about it.
We'll not make it too technical, don't worry.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
So, JSTC IT Director, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I am very pleased to announce that we have City of Delray Beach has won the Top 10 Digital Cities Award for 2023. A lot of hard work has gone into improving the city's technology, and I'm just thrilled that these accomplishments are being recognized. So, what is it, a top 10 digital city? Well, each year, the Center for Digital Government conducts a survey, and every city in the U.S. is invited. And what do they look for? Well, the Vice President of that organization, I think, said it best. It's a city that keeps the focus on the needs of the communities it serves while implementing technology to improve delivery and execution. So, does that mean we have better technology than Los Angeles and Boston? No, not really. The grouping is by population size, and the City of Delray Beach actually ranks in the smallest city category. And to me, that makes it even more impressive that we were able to achieve so much in being such a small city. So we ranked number four in the nation in our population size.
Fantastic.
So what factors were reviewed? As you can see from this slide, it was a comprehensive citywide review, but I did want to point out this one. Align goals between the City Commission and city staff. Now, this is not based on the honor system. We had to provide documentation to prove we're doing what we say we're doing. So how did I prove this one? Well, I sent them multiple clips of our commission goal-setting meetings, in particular, the one from 2021 where we prioritized technology improvements. And even in that one, we talked about, hey, maybe someday becoming a top 10 digital city. And just a little over two years later, you know, here we are. So this is a citywide, as I said. Technology looked at from every department, PD, fire, public works. But of course, there's a strong focus on the IT department, and if you even want to be considered, the IT department needs to have its house in order. And so, you know, what kind of things did they cover? So we had to provide documentation about what we've done with cybersecurity, disaster recovery, our use of virtual servers. I don't think a lot of people know, it actually takes hundreds of servers to run a city, and it takes some smart decisions to keep those servers up and running 24/7. So we're utilizing what's known as virtual servers. This is as techie as the conversation's gonna get. And not only does that save space and cooling costs, but it gives us robust disaster recovery capabilities because we can move those servers electronically to anywhere in the world, to in the cloud, or to our disaster recovery site in Tallahassee. So the reviewers are really impressed with things that we've done on the back end. We also talked about the technical strategist positions, which are new to the city, and these positions are dedicated to certain departments and understand the business processes in that department so they can better implement technology. And I think if you talk to Anthea, she will say that that position was crucial to the implementation of the online permitting system. We've hired a second one that's going to be focused mostly on finance and HR, so we're looking forward to that. So that's the back end, more boring stuff, and I'll turn it over to Gina. She moved on me, to go over some of the technologies that are more public-facing.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Gina Carter, Director of Communications. Is this better? Yes. Okay. So as Jay mentioned, there were a lot of different factors that were taken into consideration when getting this recognition, and one of them, obviously, a really important one, is citizen engagement. And so these are the forward-facing technologies that help us kind of build that citizen engagement. On this slide, we have one of the oldest and one of the newest ways that we reach out to citizens, right? A website, it's pretty old-school. Our website is extremely robust. It's more than 300 pages, and it's one of the most transparent municipal websites out there. We give information on all kinds of things that other municipalities just don't, so it's a really valuable resource, and it actually has 10,000 unique visitors every month. So it's really being used by our residents. One of our newest technologies is this New City App. This app is really amazing. It has over 21 different functionalities that users can take part in. It can direct them to other places where they can gather more information, and they can actually perform many functions right on the app. Although anyone can use the app without actually subscribing, we already have 3,000 subscribers, which is a really great start. So, hey, Jay, next slide. So there are a lot of different things that we're doing. One of them is reaching out to other media outlets, like at Nanogab Magazine, where we do a once-a-month State of the City from the mayor. This is great. They have 100,000 readers, so it really helps to push our message out to another stream that isn't owned by the city. We do have our own magazine that we publish twice a year, and it's really popular. Residents really love it. It's a beautiful magazine. It is printed, and it also is digital. And in the digital version, we have a readership of about 17,000, which is really great for a municipal magazine that talks about municipal issues. In addition to that, we have a digital newsletter that we send out at least once a month, sometimes more often when there's a lot going on. We have a little over 9,000 subscribers for that, so it's a really great resource, and it's a great way for people to get information that's happening in a timely manner, but also it's an email, so they can reply back to the city and ask questions and get more information and get directed to other resources. So it's really valuable. Another thing that we've been trying to do, and we've done a great deal this year in 2023, is more face-to-face engagement. We've had plenty of meetings from the geo-bonds to the budget to, we just lost our presentation, and also historical symposiums. We've done a lot of work to build that face-to-face community this year, and we have plans for an even more robust town hall-style engagement for next year. So that's coming up, and it's a really great way. We are in the small-town category, and in this kind of cosmopolitan small-town, face-to-face engagement really does matter. I'm just gonna keep talking.
Yeah, I'm gonna zip this, yeah. If you can.
Our last, well, my last slide is about social media. So our social media has actually grown in the last five years to an incredible degree. We have over 160,000 followers across the 11 city platforms that I manage, and those 11 platforms post 3,000 times a year. So we are really active getting our message out to our followers, and the fact that we have 160 followers really speaks to the fact that what we're putting out there is resonating. And then the last thing I want to talk about is our YouTube channel, which just this summer, Jay came to me and kind of gave me a challenge of going from a certain subscribership number to breaking the 1,000 subscriber because that would enable the city to use functionality that YouTube only allows for certain channels. So we worked together, we came up with a plan, and really quickly, we passed that 1,000 mark. So now the city has over 1,000 subscribers. We have 460 different videos available online right now, and I feel like that's just gonna keep growing. We have really great content that's going out. So that's my forward-facing. Congrats.
Congratulations. Absolutely. Very good. So I have to just add a couple of things. I want those in the audience and those that are listening in to know that when I first came here, we had green screen technology, and that was only about a decade ago. And that was not because the rest of the world was on green screen technology, that's because Delray Beach was on green screen technology. We had never moved into the technology that was available to us as it came available, and it really kind of left us in a lurch because to get the information from that, the capacity of way back at green screen technology when that was popular to what it had moved into, those windows had closed in between. So it became almost impossible to try to move that information because in a city, you don't want to lose information that you have. So kudos to you, and I have to tell you, since you've been here, Jay, we have seen nothing but progress. We were trying to get to that point for many years, and it was very disappointing, but it made a difference once you came in and started harnessing and getting us to go in that direction. And every time you all talked about doing something like online permitting or whatever, inside I would quiver because I would think, oh, gosh, you know, I don't know if we're gonna be able to do it, and it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be tough. You all have done it so professionally, just like when you took that cursor and you just went, showed us right up there where it was. It was like a professional, and we really appreciate it. You've really brought us into the 21st century, so thank you so much, and congratulations. Without you, we would not be anywhere near looking at an award like this.
Thank you, and we have to thank, you know, all the departments that are involved, the key public works and development services.
Absolutely.
They had to make serious commitment to get this technology in place as well, so it's a real partnership.
For sure. Absolutely. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Well, I think we should definitely use this opportunity in this full house. If you haven't downloaded the Delray Beach City App...
There you go.
Please take out your phones and download that app. Go to our website, sign up for our newsletter. Because a lot of that was done for you, but probably the heavy lift was what you referred to as the boring stuff, not so boring for us.
No.
But you guys helped fund that, so I wanted to just...
Well, we made it our priority.
Yes, you did. So I just wanted to make sure you knew we put that money to good use.
And for everyone in the room, I think that's really important. We have these annual meetings, and everything is a priority, but you only got to choose a handful that you're gonna tackle in that, you know, next 365 days, and something that spans every single department, right? Such as IT, really takes everybody, it takes all of leadership to get on board. So yes, we prioritized it, we funded it, but the hard part was the implementation part. And aside from all of us taking our online test for security, for what's the spam where they're always testing us?
Phishing.
Phishing, our phishing tests, all that implementation was you guys. And congratulations on this award. I know it was an incredible amount of work, and we look forward to taking it to the next level because I know you're not done. I know we've got a lot of other ideas to keep us as one of the top cities in the country. So, thank you.
Deputy Vice Mayor?
I'll just briefly chime in and join my colleagues in saying thank you for all your hard work. I mean, being fourth in our category is unbelievable, like what an achievement. And this really fits into some of those conversations we were having about being an adaptable city, especially in terms of disaster recovery and security, and it sounds like it was all hands on deck. So thank you to all the departments and staff that had a hand in this, and it really sounds like you're doing great work, Gina, with the community engagement component of this. And I know we've been nagging you a lot, so thank you for hearing us out and really, you know, it sounds like we're really moving in the right direction there. So thank you so much, guys.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes, just thank you for the presentation and congratulations on winning this award, and, you know, thanks for keeping Delray on the top of the list. Thank you.
So appreciate it, and you guys. All right, moving on to 4B, which is Resolution 218-23. This is an important and very special resolution for William Marino's 30 years. So if we can invite Dwayne, and you tell me when you want me to read this reso into the record, and I'll do it.
All right, Mayor. Well, Dwayne DeAndre, Human Resources Director, it's great to come before you again with some more recognition, right? Some more recognition. So this one is an individual recognition, as you mentioned, 30 years of service for William Marino. And if you want to go ahead and read into the record the resolution, that'd be wonderful.
Will do. Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, recognizing and commending William Marino for 30 years of service to the City of Delray Beach, whereas William Marino began his career with the City of Delray Beach on November 8th, 1993, and on November 8th, 2023, achieved 30 years of full-time service with the City of Delray Beach. And whereas William was hired as a firefighter/paramedic in 1993, was promoted to a driver/engineer, fire lieutenant, and then to fire captain in 2011, where he is currently serving with honors and distinction. And whereas William has demonstrated his dedication to the fire profession by completing and maintaining his hazardous materials technician certification, he earned his fire safety inspector certification, his step-trainer designation, and participated as a member of the department's dive team during his career. And whereas William achieved his certified dispatcher status and served as a valuable part-time member of the police communications staff for many years, and whereas William is appreciated and respected for his ability and his willingness to provide outstanding communication to internal and external customers, he has mentored his direct reports and assisted them in preparing for their promotional exams. He excels in conveying his knowledge to others and has provided valuable leadership and supervision to his team during his tenure. And whereas William is known for fostering powerful team dynamics, using good judgment in emergency situations, and pivoting quickly to accomplish the mission and keep his team safe. And whereas the City of Delray Beach and the City of Delray Beach Fire Department are honored to have Captain William Marino as a valuable member of the department, now therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida as follows. Section 1, that the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach hereby recognizes and commends William Marino for 30 years of dedicated and faithful public service. And Section 2, that the City Commission hereby congratulates and expresses sincere thanks and appreciation to William Marino for his many years of faithful service, and wishes him the best of health and happiness in his continued employment. Passed and adopted in the regular session on this 14th day of November 2023.
All right. So Mayor, on behalf of yourself and the commission, I'm gonna present to Mr. Marino the resolution framed for him, and also a plaque commemorating this moment.
Fabulous.
And then Chief Tommy's gonna say a few words, and then we'll go from there.
Very good.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Keith Tommy, Fire Chief. I have a few things the resolution didn't mention that I would like to talk about. The first thing is that Bill lives in Davie, Florida with his lovely wife Melanie, who's here today, and their two daughters, Francesca and Angelina. They're both in the front row there. Bill comes from a family of firefighters. His dad is retired from the Fire Department of New York, which I believe is here in the front row as well, and his brother retired from the City of Sunrise Fire Department. Over the past 30 years, Bill has received several recognitions, letters that are just literally too much to count. Bill is a very valuable member of our department, and his institutional knowledge can only be matched by probably Chief Giacone in the back row there. No one else comes close to these two. Bill spent half his time, as you mentioned, 15 years' worth as a part-time fire dispatcher with the police department. That's where he honed his speaking voice, and most of you have already heard him speak. You probably don't even know it yet, but anytime you call City Hall and you hear that male voice on the recording, that's Bill.
Oh. Wow.
He actually took his dispatching skills and became a sports announcer. So he announces sports at FIU, I'm sorry, Nova Southeastern Lynn University. So if you ever attended any of those games, you've probably heard him there. Bill has another talent that he's working on and he's pretty good at. He's an avid cornhole player. He competes in tournaments, he plays in several leagues, he even plays against professional cornhole players.
Wow.
Who knows? The next time you turn on ESPN, you might see Bill competing. Bill is known to do things the right way and his way, which is evident by the way he handles getting a new house. You see, most people sell their current home and purchase another bigger, nicer home, but not Bill. Bill takes his current house, tears it down, and builds a newer, bigger, better house on the same piece of property. He's doing it his way. Bill, you're truly an asset to the fire department, and I know you only have three years left. Make the best of it, and thank you for an unwavering 30 years of service.
Appreciate it. For the first time, I really don't have much to say. Usually have a prepared speech, but I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for being here, and for my family and coworkers to support me tonight. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, and thank you. Thank you. Okay, so this is a resolution, so if I can get a motion for a resolution 218-23 in a second, we'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
It is official. All right, moving on to our final presentation, which is our monthly Employee of the Month. This would be Ms. Lachey. Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commission. Lachey King, Human Resources Generalist, having the best job ever. Today, I have a wonderful presentation for you. It is our October Employee of the Month. Before I tell you who it is, I want you to know that today I'm doing something special. I'm actually going to read it into record. So, let's celebrate our Employee of the Month, Mr. Gerard Ferguson. Mr. Ferguson has been stationed every morning at the Banyan Creek Elementary School area, directing traffic. There have been several other officers that have tried to accomplish what he has done. I have tried many times to help. So, when I receive many compliments about his effectiveness and efficiency in getting the vehicles in and out, I decided to write this up. The light at Lake Ida and Baric is no longer backed up, and you can expect to be in and out of the school zone area within 10 minutes or less. Mr. Ferguson takes his position seriously and works very hard, rain or shine. He also ensures the safety of not only the children, but for the pedestrians that are trying to cross at such a busy time. His hand signals are easy to follow, and overall, having him there has been fantastic. You can tell when he is not there. Nice. So with that, we'd like to say thank you and congratulations. So, on behalf of Mayor and the commission, we would like to present you this wonderful plaque.
Thank you.
And in addition to that, you will receive eight hours off with pay.
Very, very important job that you are doing over there on Barwick Road. Thank you so much. All right, moving on, we are at comments and inquiries. We're gonna start off with Mr. Moore, or I should say, Mr. Oris. If there's any responses from a prior public comment, now would be the time to speak.
I do not have anything at this time.
All right, very good. We're gonna move on to the public. At this point, this meeting is now open to public comment from anyone wishing to speak to any topic or agenda item that, other than a quasi-judicial or a public hearing item. The public will have the opportunity to speak on quasi-judicial and public hearing items later in the meeting, as those items are called. For public comment, please make sure that you've signed in, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Come on up.
I'm going now. All right. Hi.
Hi.
Sorry.
No problem.
It's gonna be just like that.
That's how we roll here.
Good afternoon. My name is Alasia.
Okay, hand over here, yep. Right behind the podium, there you go. I'm sorry, say your name again.
Alasia Banks.
Okay.
And I am before you to present, on behalf of the Roots Cultural Festival...
An address, too.
Oh, the address.
Yep. Your address.
7182 Hyatt Avenue, Atlanta, Florida.
Okay.
33462.
Thank you.
Don't write that down.
You can go on.
Okay. So I am before you, on behalf of the Roots Cultural Festival of Delray Beach, we are presenting our second annual Black History Parade and Celebration, and the anticipated date is February 3rd, 2024. I'm going to be following along with you in the presentation that you have in your hand.
Okay.
The purpose, and the mission and the history of our group, the reason I'm here before you, is we would like to restore the partnership of this legacy organization. Our organization was supported by the community, by the city, even through being proclamated a day in the city's history. So we just would like to continue that partnership, as well as your support for the organization. All right, that next slide is of a video that we will not be playing, so you can go right along. So next, we'll begin speaking on the route. So far, we would like for our route, this is an alternative, we would be starting on Fourth Street, this is the parade route, starting on Fourth, taking Atlantic, going east to 10th Avenue to Pompey Park. That is an alternative route. The route that we would like to take this year is going to start at the Community Center, which is located here, and we will take that up first, and to Atlantic Avenue, down to 10th, and that is where we will end, at Pompey Park, for the celebration. If you keep turning, you'll see, we have it laid out where we would like for the placing to be, where we would like for parking, additional parking. We have tried to map out just about everything you can imagine. We have a staging area located near the tennis courts. We have where... That's it?
Yep, that's your three minutes, but...
Okay.
Yep, are you coming in next?
No, no, no. I'm giving mine.
Okay, you can't give your time, you have to have six people to give up time to get another three minutes.
I think we have six.
You have six people that will not speak.
We have six.
Okay, very good. So let me see your hands. Okay, so...
You gotta get the other two outside.
All right, so we're not gonna hear from everybody else. Go right ahead and give her another three.
Moving right along. No pressure, Banks, no pressure. All right, so the permits that we have obtained so far have been an annual food permit by the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services Division of Food Safety. We have also obtained the permit of certificate of liability insurance through Accord and general liability policy through HISCOS. The next slide is the participants that we had last year. Of course, you can flip through that whenever you have time. We've also included the list of our vendors that participated. We've also included the list of our vendors that participated this year, which was our last event. Next is our budget. We have included the budget that was there for last year with the adjustments made for this year. In the budget, we discussed the officers, the budget of each department. So if you have time to look through there. Okay, and then we also took the liberty of including the feedback from the community for this year's or for next year's event. We did a survey for the community. First, we did a survey of the demographics of the community. We found that the second largest demographics in the community was the Black History, I'm sorry, the African Americans, and we would like to incorporate this as a foundation for why this event is needed and why we need to continue to have different events and celebrations for our African Americans in the community. One of the survey questions was, are you a resident of Delray Beach? And there you can see, we had, out of those that were surveyed, 32% said no, 67% said yes, and those were people that agreed to the parade. The question was, if you were not a member of Delray Beach, or if you were not a citizen of Delray Beach, would you travel to attend the Black History Parade? We got 33% did not answer, 1% said no, and the rest said yes, of course. And the next question was, are you in support of the Black History Parade? Out of the community and those that were surveyed, 99% said yes, and then 1% said no.
Very good.
And...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Tanya Kusakian, 44132nd Street, West Palm Beach, Florida, here on behalf of Jeddah Investment Company. I want to thank you, all the commissioners, and Angela Burns for sponsoring the workshop that we're going to be presenting at in January. Just wanted to say a few words on that. As you know, we only have 10 minutes to speak, so kind of hard to do all that in 10 minutes, but I wanted to share with you just a brief update on some of the things that we've been working on. We sent over some letters earlier today of some support that we received from elected officials here in Palm Beach County that represent the Delray Beach area, State Representatives Caruso and Palm Beach County Commissioner Marcy Woodward, in addition to those we've already received from State Senator Lori Berman and State Representative Joe Casello. I hope you've received those letters that were sent earlier today. In addition to that, we've continued to do our public outreach and incorporate the feedback that we've received from city staff and elected officials, as well as the community. As you know, when we spoke here, I think it was the end of September, we had about 16 people come and speak during public comments in support of providing affordable and attainable housing for individuals who make $35,000 a year or less, of which there are 8,800 people in the city of Delray Beach. As you may know, Delray has one of the highest numbers of single, non-family residence households in Palm Beach County, and of those, 41% make $35,000 a year or less. And so, as you know, we'll continue to make the case, and others have also made the case for the proximity of workers to their place of employment, the importance of stabilizing lives in communities, and ensuring that we have a diverse community, not just racially, ethnically, and religiously, but economically as well. We continue to build that support and incorporate that feedback, and we've been blessed to have the support of the Set community and many others who have been informed of how this would work, and we're going to continue to do that and try to get more support as we get closer to the January workshop. We're open to any questions that you may have in that process as we continue to fine-tune things to make sure that we have a win-win for the residents, for the property owners, for our businesses, and for our elected officials and city staff. And so we're doing this in a very transparent, public-facing manner. We want to make sure that all the people who do support this have their voice heard. I think Commissioner Boilston, you weren't here that day, but we had 16 people speak, and then we had about 30 people in the room that supported and raised their hands in support of this endeavor, because they didn't want us to speak on it, but they submitted public comment cards. So thank you for your attention. We look forward to presenting in January.
Very good, thank you. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Hi there, Julie Casal, 3717 Satin Leaf Court, Delray Beach, Florida. I'm here on 133rd Road South, but just broadly, I know it's a quasi judicial, but my daughter has an SAT class tonight, so I was hoping to speak. Whether it's considered or not, I don't know, but I'm here because there was a rumor going around that this item...
Okay, so are we talking about the issue?
I think it's A.A., and we really, I understand the issue.
Can I just speak broadly to the rules and procedures of the city and not the subject matter?
You can speak about the rules and procedure, yes.
Thank you. Super quickly, there's a rumor going around that the item is going to be postponed. I do not know if that's true or not, but I'm just here to ask us to follow our rules of procedure. I believe it's the City Commission Local Rules, Quasi Judicial Rules, Page 11, 4F, only one motion to postpone shall be considered. And, you know, the reason is that there are a lot of residents in my neighborhood who really care about this issue and who are genuinely involved, and they've gone to SBRAB meetings, P&amp;Z meetings, and now here. So I hope that you follow your procedures and don't postpone. Please don't ignore your procedures and be the gatekeepers that you were elected to be, because that's, you know, what we would like to see. Quickly at the end, I'd say, we'd like to see less homes. Thank you so much.
Hello, Rick Kalinsky. I live at 36 South Ocean Boulevard, across from the pavilion.
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry, your name?
Rick Kalinsky.
Thank you.
Okay. And I was at the meeting, I guess it was two months ago, the last meeting?
We were here last week.
We were here last week. Oh, whatever. This was over a month ago, but we were addressing the pavilion and the problems we had with the homeless and the drugs and stuff like that, and I wanted to come back to say, it's worked out perfect. There hasn't been one incident since then. So I thank you guys, the commission, and the police have done a phenomenal job, and I want them to be recognized.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Alex Kulianos. I'm at 618 Gardenia Terrace. I was also here on regards to the pavilion issue in front of Luna Rosa a few months ago. I wanted to say thank you to the commission and to the police officers that have been there basically all day. I work 6:30 a.m. to about 3:00 p.m. four days a week, and I have seen their presence consistently. There's a noticeable decrease in all of the problematic activity we have seen and a continuous growth in the increase in positive. Our season is coming. I just want to say thank you. I just hope that they keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Haley Dayton. I live on 1717 Northeast 3rd Ave. in Delray Beach, and I just wanted to follow up with Alex and Rick and say thank you so much to the police force, the chief of police. Thank you so much for everything you've done with your time and your effort. We can really see the difference. There, I haven't had any complaints. I haven't, two months ago when I came here, I complained about having to smell certain bodily fluids while walking to work, and I haven't smelled that since. So I do really appreciate it, and as Alex said, season's coming, so just keep up the awesome work, and we all really appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Cameron Royal. I'm from Stitches by the Sea on 710 East Atlantic Avenue, and I'm here today, and I'm going to speak to you from my heart. We're a family-owned, four-generation business. 96%, so I've been told, 96% of businesses in Delray Beach are small businesses. Our major concern is the parking situation, especially the gladiol lot. The majority of my employees are over 70 years old. Many of my customers are over 70 years old, too. We're being told that my 83-year-old mother can park at the top of Old School Square, possibly take a shuttle bus with all of her things and her bare back down to the shop, which is going to take her at least 20 minutes. And the same thing goes for my employees. I, as a small business, cannot afford to pay $4 an hour for parking for my employees. I have customers that come, and they come and they sit, and they go to restaurants, and they go to shops, and they walk all over the place. You're changing the feel, this unbelievable place that's so close to my heart, and I'm asking if you could possibly consider changing the lots. There are so many employees, there are these young people that work and that are waiters and waitresses, they can't afford to pay $4 an hour. Start pay parking at 5 o'clock. I have no problem coming into town on a Saturday night and paying for parking. I did it this past Saturday night. I paid $16. I'm okay with that, but not when we're coming to work and you're asking people that are older, 70-plus, to park at the top of a parking garage and take a shuttle bus down to their store. It's not fair, and I just hope that you can be compassionate. And we chose this town because it's so special, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Siobhan Barrowian. I'm here with Perry Winkle Morley, Coco &amp; Co., 339 East Atlantic Avenue and 323 East Atlantic Avenue. I'm also here to speak about parking. I'm aware that the City Commission has decided to escalate parking January for just putting meters in the railroad lot. You're shaking your head. That's not happening? That was the information I was given.
We don't discuss here. You could just go and make your statement.
Okay, great. Well, I would encourage all of you to please put a hard pause on decisions as it relates to metering free parking lots before you, until you communicate with merchants and business leaders. I'm super grateful to Laura Simon and the DDA for hosting a meeting, a merchant meeting last week for all of us to get together and communicate about parking. There were great ideas, lots of conversation. I think the thing is, no one from the City Commission was there, and it seems that decisions are being made without communicating with your merchants. I could go on and on about how if that railroad lot is metered, how it will affect our employees, how it's going to affect business, how it's going to affect revenue, how it will change the city of downtown Delray Beach, which I know is a changing city. I think we're all aligned in how we want that change to go, but I just really ask that, I've been trying to get in touch with the mayor's office, with the city manager's office. I can't get ahold of anyone. Your merchants and your city leaders are wanting to communicate and talk about this issue, so it's just an ask that you guys put a pause on moving forward with legislation until you really communicate with your merchants. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My cell phone.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Robert Ovento, Silverball Museum, local resident. I agree with everything she said as a starting point. Just more feedback. I mean, the goal has to be, what is the parking? Is it to encourage businesses and customer satisfaction or to raise revenue? So I think there's a little conflict there. I wrote letters before. I think, being a progressive city in a lot of ways, I think free parking for everyone would be great. I think the decks could be, free parking would make a simple message. If you're going to meter things, meter them five hours, three hours is too short for a stay in town. After three hours, they're not going to move your car on a Saturday night, you're not going to stay the whole day in town. So I think the three hours has to be to five. I also think in different areas, you should have 30-minute parking for people that want to come in and out, pick up something, go to work, drop things off. So I think it can't be one size fits all. Different areas of different businesses are a little different, so I think the five-hour meter, Atlantic Avenue, fine, but I think the five-hour meters have to be, you know, from the three hours. Let me see. And I think the biggest takeaway is the parking decks. That would be a great message for our town to say, free parking for everyone, if the decks were basically free, because all the employees then wouldn't pay even at the meters. The meters would be for customers, which I think is a great thing. If the employee wants to pay, fine, but if they know they can go to the parking decks and maybe before 5 o'clock, fine, but I think all the time would be a great message for this town to have free parking in all the decks. The convenience of the parking spots, pay. You don't want to walk further, but I think to the previous speaker's point is, some people are elderly, they're not going to walk too much, and I think the 30 minutes should be free, so you can come in, do a little business and leave, or a few two-hour free meters, just to make sure there's a balance between customer service to our customers and to the revenue of the city and to keep people from taking up a spot. I don't want my employees parking right next to the Silverball. I tell them, go to the lot, go to the free parking deck. So I think as much as we can get the meters for customers is the number-one goal for this city, to have a thriving retail, because retail now is online, and it's not strip centers that don't have meters. If you got a ticket when you went to Whole Foods, you might not go to Whole Foods that often. So point is, we're competing against traditional parking areas of strip centers and other areas, so I just think a lot of thought has to go in to massage it, because you don't want to be in the offseason struggling, right? The offseason's fine, but it's the offseason that you need the business. So you don't want, you want the locals from 20 miles away to come to Delray, and I think the free parking meters for everyone, the free parking decks would be a great message for this town to have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Walker, 1312 Northwest 2nd Street. I am here this afternoon to say that I support the proposed Black History Parade for February 2024 in Delray. I want to say to this commission that a part of our celebration of Black History includes the Sherwin-Williams American Legion Post 188C. It has been here since the 1940s, a place for soldiers returning from war to come home after serving in various branches of the military to relax, mingle, and collaborate with fellow soldiers. The military and the American Legion still practiced Jim Crow laws or enforced racial segregation in the 40s. Although the Milton Myers Post 65 in Delray was chartered in 1920, people that looked like me were not allowed in the building. This being the case, African-American soldiers and community members saved and sacrificed to build Post 188C in the 40s. This building has been a location for not only the veterans, but many community events. Why would the quote "all-American city" not give the building and the land to the veterans? The EJS organization has done and continues to do marvelous things for the youth in Delray. The city should work with Mr. Dupree and his group to find them a home. That home should not be the American Legion Post 188C. It is alleged that notification of the city taking the building was sent to a deceased veteran. Mayor and commissioners, you need to do the right thing and return the building and include the land to the veterans of Post 188C. How can you look in the mirror and not do what is right by our veterans? The end.
Yes, sir.
Reggie Cox, 715 Northwest 2nd Street. I want to remind everyone the theme of the last election. The theme of the last election was return to civility. And that theme resonated from an era in the city of Delray Beach, which is labeled as the regime of mean. What do I mean by that? Where there was a major abuse of power and retribution, what are some examples of that? Rewriting the history of the SET plan language. Rewriting the history of the comprehensive plan language that was given by the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee to the commission, handpicked, steering committee by the commission, rewriting of that language, not taking their recommendation and removing the SET language from the comprehensive plan, eliminating independent CRA board, removing the banners on West Atlantic Avenue, the SET banners after they were initially installed, blocking the SET Neighborhood Signage Improvement Program after three years' worth of work and dozens of meetings, repealing WARC's review process of development projects in West Atlantic, Northwest, Southwest, Fifth Avenue, revolving during the city manager's office, the Dirty Water scandal, plethora of lawsuits, past city managers, whistleblowers, Old School Square, American Legion Post 188C. I could go on. So you see, in the name of accountability, we have much still to clean up, and we are asking you to keep the broom moving in the... And we are asking you to keep the broom moving in the right direction. Doing the right thing means righting the first wrong and not compounding the situation to cause more dysfunction by moving away from the root disrespect from the era of blatant abuse of power. Pending litigation should be resolved first for any lawsuit before going into new contracts. For example, the BH3 lawsuit right now with the CRA, nobody would dare go into a contract with a new situation till that's resolved. I think if Chuck Redley was here, he would probably say it's time to set a new North Star to resolve this lawsuit. And so we respectfully, the community's respectfully asking that you take time to do that, to clean up the aftermath. It's a lot, but the voters did speak and we're going to continue to speak. And we ask you to do the right thing and support our veterans, our community history, and every other organization that is going to work towards resolving that issue. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
It is a fact that systematic racism was.
Can I get your name and address first?
Kyle Holder, one oh two Southwest Ninth Avenue, Delray Beach, Florida. It is a fact that in the nineteen forties, that systematic racism was commonplace in this city as it was across the South. And I think that of all the people on this, on your organization, that your city attorney knows very well that one of the core foundations of American law is to make sure that the people who do not have are not railroaded or taken advantage of by the people who do have. It is very clear that we have a group of people who really and truly may not have the means to bring their building back up to par. That, of course, meaning the elderly soldiers who are, who are right now immersed in some type of legal problem with you all. I am here again to ask that cooler heads prevail and that we do what's right on behalf of those people who cannot do for themselves. We're talking about elderly African-Americans, soldiers, and veterans. Now, I would also say that this runs really, really close to being very similar to an action which was done, a wrong which was done in the nineteen forties. The precedent has already been established in the nineteen forties that these soldiers were not to be given their land. They were able to build the building. In effect, you were not able to own, but you were able to share crop. So now, by putting anyone else in that building without giving them that land, EJS or anyone else, you are in fact following that same precedence. And I would hate to think that eighty years later, that perhaps sharecropping is still very much alive in Delray Beach, Florida. My concern, ma'am, serves. My concern is that somewhere along the line, egos, money, and a whole lot of other things got involved. And we lost track of the fact that gentlemen like Captain David Randolph here, who's eighty-some odd years old, is now having to once again fight? For what? That thing which should have been given to him rightfully when he returned? I implore you, rather than to continue on the fight, why not set a new precedent and do what's right? Help them. Give them programs, give them direction, give them an opportunity to perhaps set a new precedent, which could be followed, not just in the state of Florida, but perhaps all over the country. Now, just by a show of hands in the last thirteen seconds, I believe that all of you own property in the city of Delray, correct? You all live in the city of Delray, correct? It's kind of odd that you all own your homes and the land underneath it, but you don't want to apply that same rule to these veterans.
Yes, sir.
This is Mayor, members of the commission. My name is David Earl Randolph. I was born February seventh, nineteen thirty-six. I'm breaking one of my cardinal's rules that's appearing before you. I wanted to stay the heck away from this microphone because I was up there as a council Notice I didn't say commission, council person, and also a commissioner. I did approximately fourteen years up there where you're sitting now. Maybe I didn't do it all right, but I know one thing is that that C behind Sherman Williams' Post one eighty-eight stands for colored. How do I know this so clearly? Because when I took my oath to become a commission officer at Florida A&amp;M University in nineteen fifty-eight, I knew what that meant. I knew I was going to face hardships when I went into the military. But believe me, you're looking at a person that was up to the task. Now, getting back to the letter C. I married a lady from Delray Beach. Her name was Mary Ella Hagwood, who I met in college. She was the perfect wife. When I lost her on oh-two, oh-three, twenty-two, I lost a piece of my heart. And I got six minutes.
You have three, sir. All right, so who's not getting up? Okay. All right, very good. Just those that didn't, you got it. Give them another three.
I'm not going to be before you too much longer.
That's quite all right. You have the support.
But I want you to know this, that when I married that lady, I raised three adult kids. All college graduates, all productive citizens. Only one that I have a little bit of trouble with.
There's always that one.
So one out of three is not bad. But let me tell you this. Serving in the military was a pleasure to me because I rose from the rank second lieutenant to major in less than twelve years. If you don't believe it, my serial number, zero five, three oh three, three six one. You can check it at any time, or I could show it to you from my folder. But I just ask you to please attempt to do the right thing because you have the power. You have the power to do what's right. Now, if you don't do it, I think all hell is going to break loose in the city of Delray I want you to know that serving in the military is no gandy dance. The cap that I have on, served in Vietnam, served in Bangkok, Thailand, served in La Rochelle, France, commanded a World War II vehicle. That was a duck and it called D-U-K-W. I don't know how many of you are interested in movies.
Thank you, sir.
I've done my six minutes.
You have. It goes fast.
I'd like to give you the rest of this story later.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Devon Odom, three nine oh five Lawson Boulevard, Delray Beach, Florida. I'm here because three of my four brothers and my father served in the military. My father told us the story about when he was discharged and in Tallahassee, he couldn't even walk on the same side of the street as Florida State because it was all girls' white school. So as an African-American coming from the war, he endured. Fast forward here in Delray Beach, and I think I've been here longer than many of you when I married my high school sweetheart and the American Legion. I had a picture left at home. Nineteen seventy-one, our Little League, which we were formed because it was segregated in Delray. We were never able to form unless, if the good white folks had drawn the boundaries right. But anyway, those names were Key Strong, Jap Bernard, some of y'all remember those, Joe Chaney, and Willie Brown, along with my husband, were the most valuable players filed four little teams we had that year. That picture was taken in that American Legion Hall. Jesse Robinson, the late Lawrence Strange, Major Graham and others, those were the veterans who not only were our coaches, but allowed us to be there. Here we come now that we are pitting this great organization, the young versus the old. I know this young man, I've seen him grow, established this organization, helped many young people. But we cannot step on the older people who deserve to have what is rightfully theirs. And as a city, we need to do the right thing. I grew up in segregation, and when I integrated Seacrest, those adults there did the right thing. I came seven months after Ruby Bridges. Everybody know what happened to her. But the adults in charge of my situation, they made it safe for me. They blocked off the roads because their intentions were good. So when your intentionists are good to do the right thing, the right thing to happen. When those people negotiated that lease back then, maybe they thought they were doing the right thing, but those people knew that this day was going to come. Seventy-six years later, I'm going to take your building and your land. And as a city commission, in the city of Delray, you are compassionate. I've lived here all my life. I love this city. And I'm asking you, do the right thing. Do not do this to our veterans.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
My name is Art Ayala. I represent Huber Pharmacy, three twenty-one East Atlantic. And I'll keep it very short. I'm here also to support the other business leaders that are concerned about the parking situation. The only thing I want to suggest is that we try and find, I guess, a nice balance between what's good for our customers, what's good for the businesses, and what's good for the employees. I think a lot of our businesses depend on that customer flow, and I don't, I wouldn't like that as much as anybody, anybody else to that get impacted by the, by the parking. And also a nice balance that helps the city with whatever the financials are behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Christina Morrison, one thousand Lowry Street in downtown Delray Beach. Just have a few comments about a few of the items. I've been around the city for a long time. I've worked here for twenty years and I've served on many boards in the city, but I'm speaking from my heart, not for any group. I've seen city commissions and CRA gave land to the IPIC. I saw a city commission give part of a city street to Atlantic Crossing. And I think it's time you gave the land to American Legion numbers one eighty-eight C. It's the right thing to do. Secondly, concerning parking, I was at the city, I was at the CRA, the DDA meeting that presented a parking plan that had the city emblem on it, so we figured it was from the city. I heard later, maybe it wasn't from the city. I don't know. Anyway, just a few recommendations. There are several parking sticker programs in town. Why don't we have a parking sticker program for employees? Pay a hundred dollars a year and you can park in any of the lots that are closest to your business. Same for the business owners. It would solve the parking issue for the employees, and there's no parking issues really during the day downtown. I'm downtown all the time during the day, and there's not really parking issues downtown. So I don't know why we put paid parking during the day to create an issue. So if you're considering putting paid parking anywhere else in the city, please start it after five o'clock. Why create a headache for the merchants? Let's try to keep this town thriving and these small businesses in full operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Mavis Benson, eight hundred Greenswood Court, and I am a merchant on the avenue and I chair the Merchants Association. First and foremost, I do want to make reference to the last commission meeting where unfortunately a comment was made that wasn't factual, that the DDA was spreading misinformation about the parking. When Commissioner Frankel did mention this several weeks before, he specifically said the railroad lot. Somewhere after that, it became all of the surface parking. That was what was presented to the parking board. That was what the merchants saw at our meeting. It did change back so that the DDA on Monday did see just the railroad parking lot. But I think it was unfortunate that we were accused wrongly of giving false information. Nonetheless, we did have a great meeting. As you saw, some of our merchants were here and they had good information. Delray Beach is really such a unique little downtown. I explained it to someone and said, it's almost like a rainforest. And the rainforest, they're chipping away at them in the name of growth and progress in other areas. Meanwhile, their animals, extinct creatures are suffering. And I thought about it, and it's not just because it rained all summer, or it's raining tonight, that I feel like we're in a rainforest, but in the name of growth and progress, which is good for downtown. It's happening, but we've got these treasures in our small businesses that need to be protected. Our competition, their competition, Amazon, people can shop online. So it makes it extremely important that we look at how we bring people and get people to them and to continue coming to our downtown. My ask would be that you would listen to others as they spoke today before you make any decisions. I know the plan is to go into force the beginning of January and full implementation at the end of January. But our merchants have some really good ideas. And it's not just free. They're not saying, as you heard, it doesn't have to be free. But let's work it so that perhaps as some of our merchants that have businesses in other cities, Washington DC specifically, said they had the same issues. But they found that by letting, having free parking during the day, meter at night, that by letting, having free parking during the day, meter at night, there are all kinds of options, and we're here to help.
Thank you.
So thank you for giving that consideration.
Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner West.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Diedrich Strawn, 206 Southwest 13th Avenue. I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but I was listening to the people in support of the American Legion Hall Post 188, and I kept hearing the same common mantra, "Do what's right. Do what's right." Listen, you all aren't gonna do what's right because you had ample opportunity to do so. If you wanna do what's right, we wouldn't be here tonight. We wouldn't be in litigation for three years, wasting resources and taxpayers' dollars. You don't wanna do what's right. You wanna do what benefits you. So stop saying, "Do what's right." If you wanted to do what's right, we had mediation a couple of months ago. Nobody on this stairs appeared. Nobody. If they wanted to do what's right, someone would have been there to represent them besides the attorney. But that didn't happen. You know why? Because they don't wanna do what's right. Stop it. And here's why they don't wanna do what's right. In the history of this country, blacks are the only group that have to beg their oppressor for common decency and humanity. No other group, just us. So when we come up here and we say, "Huh, just do what's right. Do what's right." That's begging. Stop it. We're in litigation right now with a very confident attorney. Don't need to beg them. They were wrong from the outset. They sent a termination letter to a dead man's house. They knew he was dead. The termination letter didn't even have a legal basis for the termination. They don't wanna do what's right. This city commission has never done what's right because it's right. They've always done it because of pressure, political allies. That's what moves them. Stop it. Sick of begging. The set comes in here, every city commission, we didn't have to beg for little things in our neighborhood. No other group, no other neighborhood in this city has to beg as much as the Northwest-Southwest Neighborhood Alliance. Stop it. The American Legion Post 188 will get the building back, but they won't get it because you're begging them, asking these people to do the right thing. They don't wanna do the right thing. They know what the right thing is. They know what it is, but they choose not to do it. You know why? Because the land is more valuable than the service of those black veterans to them. And remember that.
Remove the banner for colored folks. Remove the barrier. And put up a banner for all folks. Remove the barrier.
Excuse me? I'm gonna ask just one, no, that's fine, you can come on up, but I just wanna take one moment to please explain why there was no representation other than you there, please. Just to clear the air, since we have an audience that now has a misunderstanding of what happened.
So mediations are confidential, so you know, you can't have the city commission attend because everything that the city commission does has to be done in the sunshine. And so if we were to have every commissioner present, then it wouldn't be a private session with mediator, which would violate the rules of the court. And so that is why the commission designated me as a representative. We had a shade meeting right before the mediation to give me direction, and our outside counsel handled the mediation.
Thank you. All right.
No, I would like to just continue. Your position on that call was our representative, correct?
I was a designee for the commission, yes.
Not as our city attorney?
Correct.
Because we have outside counsel.
Yes.
So just to really be clear, none of us could have been on that call. None of us are supposed to be on that call.
Not allowed to be there.
We did. People even said, "Hey, why wasn't the city manager there as your representation?" Because
Not allowed.
Our city attorney was representing, which has been around a lot longer than our city manager and knows a lot more of the history. So she, that was more appropriate for Ms. Jellin to represent the city, and we have outside counsel as our attorney on that call.
Correct.
It's not 'cause we don't care, it's not 'cause we're not listening. And I would like just to add to that, the last time we were all up here talking, Ms. Jellin, I asked you, what is the absolute minimum we would need to go back into a lease with the Legion and go back into giving them the keys to that property? What is the absolute minimum we would need?
From the Legion?
From the Legion.
It's just an offer. I mean, we would just need an offer from them with a schedule as to what they're gonna do with the property, and the direction from the commission was to make the offer.
Because legally in the state of Florida, we cannot give or do a long-term lease for a dollar or zero dollars a year with any organization without
Public benefits.
Without a clear defined public benefits. So in all of these meetings that we've been having in regards to this lawsuit, this is all we've been asking for. That is the minimum of what we need. I think that's as much as I can say about that subject.
Yeah, we're gonna move on, because we typically don't do that, but I just wanted to make sure that it was not a misunderstanding. Yes, it was a misunderstanding, and I also want to inform everybody else who's gonna be speaking, you speak to us. This isn't the platform to speak to everybody. This is when you're coming to speak to the commission. So just make sure you're directing your comments to us. I didn't correct it because I know that there was some heat. I didn't wanna upset anybody any further, so just in the future, just direct your comments to us. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hey, how are you? Excuse me. Aaron Holly Burton, 9667 Caliandra, Boynton Beach Boulevard, 33436. I just wanted to say, Police Chief and your guys, appreciate everything you guys did with the homeless and the pavilion and everything. I mean, hands down, night and day difference. You know, the customers are saying it, the residents are saying it, so I really appreciate what you guys have done. So thank you and Commissioners for supporting them. As far as parking goes, we've had the same parking problem for the last 15, 20 years. Every survey says the same thing. We got plenty of parking, we just don't manage it correctly. I was on the board for five years. I was at the meeting with the DDA and the merchants. The information given to the merchants by the DDA or the merchants was not, it was given in the wrong order. So it spurred up issues that you can't address till you know that they're there, right? So they got fed information that was not given in the correct way. At the end of the meeting, it all came down to the majority of your problems will go away if the lots start at a later time. As opposed to 8:00 or 12:00, if they started 3:00 or 4:00, most of them, the three that showed up wouldn't be here. So the railroad lot is 191, 192 spots, right? That's majority employees. If you can come off 95, make a left, or get on Atlantic and make a left on the employee lot behind Johnny Brown's and go park and enjoy Delray Beach, just like that, it's great. The Old School Square Garage has never been full since it's been built. The fourth and fifth floor are always empty. In the busiest years, it's always empty. Employees can park there for free. It's been our recommendation for a couple of years now. Get the turnover in the railroad lot, gladiol lot, put them in the garage for free where it's safe, it's lit, it's clean. Employees are there, more revenue, more turnover. It's a win-win. It's been the same result every parking study. Please stop paying for it. We know the answer. Thank you, guys. Appreciate what you do. Very proud to be here.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Brown, 712 US Highway 1, North Palm Beach. I'm an attorney. I'm a former mayor. I'm a former port commissioner. I am the attorney for Post 188, and I'm not gonna talk about what happened at the mediation, but I can tell you in 35 years of practice, I've never been to a mediation where the only persons there are attorneys, particularly when there's a municipality. There's usually a staff member, an administrator from the administrative office, not an attorney, because everybody knows attorneys can't get things worked out. All we do is come in after it's over to clean up the mess, try to anyway. Now, so from a practical standpoint, when I served on the port of Palm Beach for eight, for four years, we were in litigation, there was always a staff member or someone designated, sometime a council member or a port commissioner. And Lord knows that the city of River Beach, we had many litigation matters when I was the mayor there for eight years. Not only was it internal, but everybody was always suing us, or we were involved in this or that. You can't get anything done when you have a bunch of lawyers sitting in the room, okay? The only time you're supposed to bring the lawyers in the room is after you've worked everything out and tell them to get it straight. I've never been to a mediation where, and I was surprised, I've never been to a mediation where the only people there are three lawyers. That's like going to, if you have a Christmas party and a bunch of lawyers are throwing the party, just pass that one up, because it's gonna be boring and nothing's gonna get done there. So I just wanted to straighten that out. Last thing I want to tell you is I've only been at this day as an addressing this commission, it wasn't you all, but another commission. Back in 1991, the decade of excellence, I was the attorney that represented all of those family members whose properties were taken by eminent domain for the tennis center. And it was, for those of you all who were here, it was a long and drawn-out battle. But at the end of the day, we came to a resolution because I explained to my clients that, yes, eventually under the law, they will be able to take your property. But if you go back and look at the Sun Sentinel article, look it up, they would tell you the judge was getting ready to block the whole process, but we worked it out because the people of Delray, the commissioners at the time, worked it out. And so I just would offer that to you, that my clients wanna work this out, but they've been here since 1947. You know, I look at that wall over there and it's kinda weird looking at that wall every time I come in here, when they're looking over at us. And I'm gonna, one day when I get the time, I'm gonna go over there and figure out which of those commissioners were on the board in 1947 when they gave Post 188 the right to be there. Because even though they kinda, it's kinda spooky of them staring at us, but I wanna thank each one of them to say, "In 1947, I've seen the old notes and the old memos, and you recognized and respected the black veterans." And I just ask for you all to consider that. Thank you.
Attorney Brown, those are just mayors, so you won't have any pressures.
Just mayors?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Well, then I'll find
So there's at least one or two there that might have been
I'll find the mayor
There you go.
Who said they deserve it, they've owned the right, they've been at World War II.
I hear you.
That's what we're gonna do. So I'll find him over there and see which one it is.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. I'm Nancy Channon, 200 Northeast 2nd Avenue, and I've been listening to everything, and I think people in the set know I really care.
Nancy, this way.
Sorry, that's right.
Yep, you got it.
And I'm really sorry that we're like being like against each other. You know, Mr. Dupree will say a lot more about the issue, but we wanna work with the veterans, and the building, it needs hundreds of thousands of dollars in repairs, and we're willing to do that and work with the veterans. And and anyway, that's my understanding. We don't wanna not include the veterans. You know, we came and we just wanna help, and just like we've helped 500, over 500 young people in the set, we wanna help. We are not the enemy. Also, we care about black veterans. I know very well, I didn't live it, but I have studied it. I was a history major. I'm on the board of the Spady. I've done a lot of reading. I know about our country's history, and it's horrible. So I just wanna clarify that it's not us versus them, okay? We're all in this together, and I hope we can find a solution. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to what is now, was 6N2, which is now 7AA. As I put on the record before, the approval of resolution number 231-23, I just wanna remove that because it is part of the now leased equipment that we are going to be moving into, and I just am not comfortable about agreeing to that, so I just wanted to make sure that I didn't give my vote to it. And I didn't wanna have the whole consent agenda not voted on by me.
Sure, of course.
So entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution number 231-23.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please. Mayor Petrollia?
No.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
All right, very good. Onto the regular agenda items, starting with 7A. This is resolution number 235-23.
I'm gonna
You're gonna read it in?
Sure. I'm not gonna read it, but as the commission's aware, the city received an unsolicited proposal from EJS, sorry, Emmanuel Jackson Senior Project, to essentially renovate and rehabilitate the American Legion building. That was received on, on or at August 8th of 2023. City staff reviewed the submission and determined the sufficiency of it. And from there, pursuant to the city's P3 policy, we filed what's called a notice of receipt, and we advertised it. So we did prepare a solicitation that was issued September 28th of 2023. We did not receive any proposals, and so we are here today. I know Emmanuel is here, and if he'd like to say a few words, but we are here today. If the commission directs us and approves this resolution, what we would do is negotiate an agreement and bring that back before the commission. And it would be pursuant to the city's P3 policy, which would provide for long-term use of the building, funding mechanisms, as well as community and public benefits that would be in exchange for the city's lease of the building. So do you wanna have Mr. Jackson come on?
You referenced our policy in regards to receiving, you know, a letter of interest or a letter of intent like this. Can you just give us an overview of that policy?
Sure. So the city did draft a P3, a public-private partnership policy. This was actually done pretty recently, essentially when we started having a lot of interest in some of the city-owned properties. Florida law says that essentially you can receive a proposal on any property in the city, and if pursuant to a city's policy, you would review it, and the main thing that you're looking for is those community benefits. Because if you're gonna give up public land essentially, and either you can sell it, you can lease it, you can license it, but there has to be some benefit to the city. And so whoever makes these proposals, they have to essentially delineate what they're gonna do for the city, what the city's gonna get in exchange for entering into this partnership, and it's a partnership. And so in this case, Mr. Jackson's nonprofit submitted a proposal. There's a lot of requirements, so you have to show proof of your funding. You have to give a pretty hefty deposit, which he did make. And you have to show what you're gonna do to the building. So we have, you know, as a public record, we have, you know, some plans as to what needs to be done to the building, and so he was able to use those plans and come up with a team. So he has an entire team that would essentially partner with him in rehabilitating the building, and at the end of it, he would have basically a long-term agreement. And so the law does provide for this. This isn't something that's like skirting a competitive process because essentially the city would receive these proposals, and we do open it up for competition, and we do provide the public almost like a little sneak peek as to what we received, and then they are able to solicit their own proposals to the city. And again, like I said, in this case, we didn't get any proposals, so there's nothing really for the commission to consider. But if you did, we would have a public presentation where they would come in, and essentially you would pick whatever you think is in the best interest of the city and move forward with those. The other option is you don't have to move forward with anything. So, you know, similar to the golf course proposals, you do have the right to reject it and go on another path.
Got it. And once you receive and go through all of that, all of that process, put it out for anybody else to put in a proposal, which we didn't get any. What is the timeline to when we have to vote on it, when we have to consider it? How?
I don't think we really have any timelines. I mean, it's pretty open. We had timelines from when we received the proposal to when we put the notice out, to when we put the proposal out and how long the proposal's open. But essentially, for us to consider a proposal or negotiate an agreement, if that's what the direction is today, we would just, you know, do our due diligence, make sure that, you know, we get consensus from the commission as to what kinds of things you wanna see in this agreement, and then we would bring it back to you. I would guess within 30 to 60 days, but there's no
But we're not, our policy doesn't have a timeline in which
It does not.
Okay, we have to consider it. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, we can have discussion.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just wanna say that I, you know, I have the utmost respect for Mr. Dupree, Mr. Jackson, and the work that he does with EJS, with the EJS project, and the hundreds of students that he helps, and his team. Absolutely wonderful. However, I am not comfortable voting on this until this litigation is resolved. I, I mean, I'm not comfortable negotiating any kind of agreement with this pending litigation.
I just wanted clarification on the process before hearing from I just wanted clarification on the process before hearing from Mr. Jackson. So I'll hold my comments.
Okay. Anything? Okay. Mr. Jackson, did you want to come up and say anything, since you were proposing?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, all right. So, I guess I first, I won't be before you long, but I do want to talk about the process of what got us to this point, and a little bit about the vision, the dreams or hopes I have for the space and how it could be beneficial for the community. So I definitely want to start back here and words like divided or things like this. That was one of my first worries back in September of '22, when during a city commission-style brainstorming session we held for EJS to kind of think of ideas of possible new homes, when I had a number, close to about seven or eight possible solutions, the Legion Hall was one of them. It was actually one of the last ones that we follow up with to entertain, because our supporter of the Legions always believed that it shouldn't have been a gate around their place, that always believed that our veterans deserved to have their building. So, there's no divide. There's maybe some miscommunications, some pieces of stories that are left out to have other people expressing their emotion, which I can completely relate with. I, you know, whatever was said here today, I do not disagree with, and I want the community and everybody to know. I don't feel a personal attack. This is what our community does when we make noise. They make noise. So, I'll start there. This whole plan or the road that led us here, from my behalf, was done with the utmost courtesy and respect for the process and our veterans. From even thinking about, well before a lease, how can we have a conversation to talk about where the veterans are currently at now, and where EJS is at? Because when this conversation started, I was up against a deadline of December 31st, 2022, where I had to be out of a current space, which is on Atlantic Avenue. And I get that at a dollar a year through CRA, all right? So, I was up against that timeline, but it was no rush. We, I really just wanted to figure out, what are the challenges that the veterans have? And I shared the challenges that EJS have. Long story short on that, our problems, our challenges, were complementary of one another. They had a building that belonged to them, that they were fighting to get back, but they, for whatever reason, and I'll let them explain, couldn't provide the necessary, kind of what the commissioner alluded to, maybe paperwork, documentation, proof of finances to bring it up to code. Hence, EJS, we have a pretty robust fundraising plan, a solid board, and years of sustainability showing growth in budget every year. And we have support, you know, a lot of goodwill, a lot of people behind us. So, I believe that I could get it done. Now, I will tell you guys, before I enter into any partnership, I try to do as much homework as I can. So I had all the documents. I had all the right conversations. So I knew what, kind, a little bit about what transpired in the history. But that didn't matter, because what the thinking was, the plan was, no city involved. Two community organizations coming together and addressing the city with an offer that they couldn't refuse. That was the plan. And that plan started with a conversation with myself, the founder and director of the EJS Project, and the commander of the Veterans Building. We laid out our challenges, our hopes for the future, and we realized that we could possibly make this work in a partnership. But that commander told me, I cannot make that decision myself. You have to bring this back to the board. We did. I met a couple weeks after that, with all voting members at the time of the American Legion Hall, Post 188. And we left that meeting with everyone in that room in attendance unanimously voting to move forward in a partnership. So I had work to do leaving there. Of course, I was excited, but the ballgame had just began. Because now, at this time, we were to prepare a unsolicited proposal, which is a lot different from where we are now with P3, but I'll get there. So, it took about three weeks to get the language right, the wording right, for that unsolicited proposal with EJS and the veterans, not one. And it's also important to note, at this time, the proposal was prepared for us. The city would give the Legion their building back, and we were entered to a sublease with the Legion. That's important to know. As we got closer to getting ready to submit that proposal, things changed. We find out from doing our due diligence, that legally, the city could not entertain or go into negotiation with a new proposal or new terms of lease with the old entity, which is the veterans that are currently suing them. So if we had any chance for this to move forward, the best option would be for EJS to be the name on the lease, because we're providing the funding, we're providing a guarantee of maintaining the property, maintenance, insurance for years to come. That's what happened April 6. We had a meeting that night, April 6, to review all the documents, to make sure everything set well with the veterans and EJS. We left that meeting really happy. We felt like that day, history was made. We even left that meeting with a name. It would be EJS Project at Sherman William Post 188. You know, it was round with applause. It was good energy, it was clapping, it was, you know, this is how you do it, this is how you come together, collaboration. Again, really at this time, it's no city. It's us coming together to prepare an offer to the city that they can't refuse. April 7, we did submit that unsolicited proposal. It was about three pages. A few weeks went by, and we got noticed via email that because of what was said in our proposal, it's not just us taking over a new lease agreement. We want to do renovations and make structural changes. So in order for staff to properly evaluate a proposal, it has to be, and this is what I found out, I'm familiar with it now, a P3 proposal, which is public-private partnership. Oh, and that proposal is about this date, and it requires a $20,000 non-refundable application fee. Of course, that makes us pause for a minute. But we were committed. I went back to my council, my board, people who had made verbal commitments to fund if we have a solution. And ultimately, we decided that, you know what, because it's in the set, because of the history of the veterans, the future of our kids, this is worth going forth with. But before you do, make sure you check in with the veterans and just get reassurance that we're all still on the same page. And I did. I sent an email, giving them an update, the same copy and paste of some language from the email I got from the city. Hey, we have to present a P3 proposal and submit a $20,000 application fee, which we are prepared to do. But before we do so, we just want to make sure, you know, we're still in this together. Can you provide me a letter of support on your letterhead? That was May 5th, May 9th, we got that letter of support on the veterans' letterhead. So now, again, this one, this P3 is not just a letter. You gotta go through work, you gotta call people, that team you alluded to that I built. You have to call and ask for favors. And the people we called to ask for favors are people who are at very high levels of their respective career field, from attorneys, to make sure that we are never in a, to make sure as best as possible that we are never in a bad contract lease agreement. We hired, well, we consulted with what we think is someone who has a pretty good reputation in the right business acumen and experience to guide us in that. We reached out to developers, architects with extensive portfolios, and all of them agreed because they believed in the vision. Again, not just EJS, EJS and the veterans at this time. So that's all important to know. We were able to get that P3 proposal put together. And right when, in June, early June, when I was getting ready to submit the binders to the purchasing manager and turn in my check, I attended an elders' breakfast and let the community know. And at that time, I, it was abundantly clear that everybody that's on the veteran's side team wasn't in agreeance no longer with the plan. So I was asked, the meeting was on a Thursday, I was asked Saturday, can I please put a hold on submitting that proposal until things get figured out internally? Of course, I honored that request, and I did not submit my proposal that following week. But I did go back the following week and express my hurt, my feelings, and how I was blindsided after putting a lot of work into making every commitment that we came up with together come to fruition. Now, people say a lot of good things about EJS and me here, but it's not me, it's the team. I'm not a wealthy person. I don't come from an affluent family. I don't have the money to write these checks. But the people who I spoke to who believed in the vision, I spoke to on behalf of us, they were able to write those checks. So, I'm saying this because at this time, it's a lot more than just me you saying yes and no to. So, once I got that heartbreaking news, I had to sit on it. I didn't sit long. Like I said, I came back the next week, and I let my community know how I felt. A lot of people in this room were there. I did a complete timeline that was not refuted, could not be debated, and I dropped nothing but facts. That's what I did, because I didn't want rumors, dramas, to start spreading. So if you say it directly from a horse's mouth in front of everybody, if someone has a problem, they will say it then. If not, you gotta trust what I said. That was the hope was. That happened. Now, right after that happened, I had to go back to those same people, the architects, the lawyers, the people, the five family agency foundations that wrote letters on their letterhead of financial commitment for me, a dollar amount of $250,000, and three more that just said financial commitment. They didn't put a number yet until we have a deal. And I had to tell them, we're on pause. It was, just gotta wait for some things to figure themselves out. That was, this was one of the hardest parts for me. Because they heard me, and a lot of them were there throughout the process, and they know how gentle I tried to be, how I always tried to talk to the right person, how I never, when I spoke, it was never me, I, EJS, it was us. Questions that they asked me, the people who I consulted with, was, well, Dupree, you tried to do the right thing, but this is not about you. This is about EJS, those kids in the future. You don't have much time. My question to you is, you worked that hard on a proposal, and you have that check ready to go, why won't you submit it? Now, y'all gotta know, it was hard for me to respond to that question, because they make sense, but they don't know my loyalty to the community. And again, the last thing I wanted it to seem like was that we were divided. So my answer was, because I'm honoring my community, and I'm gonna let the process play out. But again, time is ticking. And then while this time is ticking, I'm visiting Andre's district with Mr. Stephen Michaels, I'm visiting Brian Rosen's buildings downtown. I'm doing everything I can to find a short-term solution while the process plays out. This is so important to know, because I don't want to go, I did not want to be here and make it look like this. But ultimately, and I lost a lot of sleep about it, I made the hard decision. And I didn't want to say it, but it's important. Part of my decision, part of the thought that went into my decision was this. I watched the veterans fight since 2018, 19. I watched that fence, I passed by it every day. I saw renderings of a building, and I saw the word, City of Delray Beach, new staffing facility. I saw an outcome where veterans are displaced, don't have anywhere to go, don't get their building back. EJS Project don't have a building anywhere to go in the set. I saw a possible outcome where the city, if that was your intent, gets the building and the land, and it no longer serves to benefit the community. I wasn't gonna let that happen. Because I know if we came into agreement one time before to make this work for each other, it doesn't matter whose name on the lease, theirs or mine, we can come to that conclusion again. And I also have faith, because I'm, I believe in the black and white. If I put that, if you demanded me to put a 26, 27-page proposal together, I'm gonna make sure all the Ts are crossed, all the Is are dotted, and I'm gonna have the biggest hitters possibly find on my team to support me. So again, I can make you guys an offer you can't refuse. And it's not about me or EJS. This was about us. So I know, again, this is not an easy decision to make. But if you're making a decision, and forgive me, and I hope this come off as the most respectful way, because I heard words, and I'm of the same feeling and mindset of Mr. DJ Strong, when he used words like, "We're not going to beg." This was it. This was my plan. I don't know what happened the last four years, why you don't have that building yet, but if we come back with a plan, and we have the money, and we have the architects, and we have the lawyers, we have the, we don't have to beg. We can get our space, and we can figure out what to do with it. That was the plan. There's no begging in that. There's no, you understand?
And we do. Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Let me ask you a couple of questions, because I hear what you're saying. Unless you're, are you finished, or are you close to finish? Because I want to...
I'm close, really close to finish.
Okay, go right ahead.
And I just want to, and I'll wrap up with talking about the plans. The plans are still, to do everything that I heard, not tonight, but a couple weeks ago. When we talked about, before Cross Ministry started occupying that space, we talked about repasses, weddings, funerals, Sweet 16, whatever type of parties are centered to enjoy community service, that was all in our vision. In 2010, that's where I had my first kid baby shower. So I know the history and how important, but it hasn't been that for a while. That's what I want to bring back. That's what I felt that we could do together. The renovations, the growth and expansion, and being in the set, and to take advantage of what's to come with the investment in Pompe Park, it's a perfect place, not just for our youth, not just for our veterans, but for other small nonprofits who can't afford buildings. We can have office space, you can have meeting space. We're thinking about everybody. So I'll answer your question.
So, you brought this forward because, not for disrespect, but because you had the plan, and you have been put off, I guess, for at least a few months, and now it's kind of like, time to move forward. Okay. And then the second thing is, is that you said that you were in front of the entire group, and it was a unanimous yes, and there was a lot of positives that happened.
Correct.
But when you went to the Village Elders table, there was a different message. Were those the same people? Because it sounds to me like, you know, there are those that are with, you know, in the Legion, the Legion, and then there are those that are not necessarily in the Legion. And so I'm asking you, were they the same people that changed their mind, or was this a different group?
From what I know, it's a different group.
Okay.
Because the people who I went into...
Did you ever go back before that group, the Legion, the 188 group, that you had the board members, that you said you were sitting in front of, and everybody said yes to it that first time? Did you ever go back and ask why you changed your mind, or no?
No, because I'm still on belief that they are the ones who changed their mind.
Okay, well, but that is the Legion. That is the group that basically is going after this. It's not, it's not a community, it's that group, correct?
So I know where you're going, but to answer your question, like...
Yes.
I didn't see one person that was in that meeting that voted here tonight speaking against it.
I got you. Okay, thank you very much. That answers questions for me. I know that the board probably has some other questions. Do you have any questions? Anyone?
So, no, I guess it's more, it's more comments. So I've been a part of the story from before it started. Obviously, you and I go way back, and I don't mean Mr. Dupree, although we did go to elementary school together, which we only found out a few years ago. But I meant with your organization. And the incredible things that you're doing in your organization, you're about to celebrate almost a decade here in Delray Beach. And obviously, as a CRA, we've been able to house you for quite a few years in one of our, in one of our properties. So when you and I sat down, and we started brainstorming, and started talking about some introductions that I can make for you in the private sector, and then some considerations maybe in the public sector, you and I both talked about the Legion building. And we both agreed that if they're not on board, then it's a moot point.
Right.
Because you don't want that, and I don't want that. And we were in a good place, and you referenced that place. I got to be part of that. I got to be at one of those meetings, and see everyone from the Legion, and how excited they were about this concept. How you guys really are a yin and yang in so many ways. I actually thought, I actually thought this could be a concept that would be, that could help Legion buildings, Legion organizations across the country, by partnering with someone who brings some funding to the table, that brings some youth to mentor to the table, that brings some youth that needs some mentoring to the table. And we had that meeting. And after that meeting, we all took a tour of the building. And Commander, you were there?
Yeah.
Yep, and we toured the meeting. And let me just tell everyone in... Yep, and we, and we toured the meeting, and, and, and let me just tell everyone in this room, the vibes, the vision, um, the conversations, the ideas that were flowing between both of these organizations. I was elated. I left that, I left that meeting, I went home and told my wife all about it, and I go, "We're really gonna do something here." We're not there today. I got, I received your proposal, and, um, this is the easiest business decision to make. This is so well done, all of your partnerships, all of your funding. But here's the thing. I learned a long time ago that this isn't running a business up here. There's more to this position than business decisions. I cannot move forward with the current state that we're in, in regards to this legion, our veterans, and the community as a whole. I have, I have to see that resolved before we can move forward. I don't think it's a good starting point for any positive relationship, and like you said, you believe that we can come to that conclusion again. And you were talking about the conclusion of these two organizations moving together. Our next meeting is not next week. Our next meeting is quite a few, quite a few weeks from here. I would like the opportunity, at the end of tonight's meeting, to request a shade meeting. A shade meeting is where we can have a conversation in regards to any lawsuits that we're in, specifically in regards to this one. I would like another shot at trying to, at trying to resolve this. So that may be, we can further this conversation. But, but I'll tell you, as an elected official, somebody who represents all this, all the community, and represent the good decisions that were made before me, and the bad decisions, and there's kind of a mixture of both. In, in the forties, there was a good one, and then before I came on the commission, there was one that wasn't so good, and it was put in motion. Um, but I represent all of that. So I'm gonna ask that we don't make a decision tonight, and, um, and that we revisit on December sixth, and, and hopefully, we can, uh, we can be in a better place because I've seen what it looks like firsthand, I've seen what it looks like, what it could be.
I, I'm gonna ask the question of you. Do you think that bringing this to the December sixth meeting, fifth, I'm sorry, fifth, thank you, I was gonna say, is that the right date? Do you think that by postponing it, that there will be a difference in yourself with respect to those that are, have, have voiced their concerns here? Do you think that they'll make a difference?
I have the hope that it will, but I think no.
The reason that I ask that is because I, I don't disagree with, uh, my colleague. I don't like seeing the, you know, the discord. And there was nobody up here that was trying to take away land from somebody, and that just hap, it happened, excuse me. No, no audience members need to be speaking out right now because we're speaking, and we, we let everybody else speak, so just have that respect. So, we went through this whole process. It was not an easy process for any of us. Here's my fear. We do nothing, nothing's gonna get done. That building's gonna sit there for another five years, and eventually, it will have to be taken down because of neglect and deterioration. When you don't have somebody occupying a building, it starts to fall in on itself, things start to happen, and I'm telling you, it becomes a sick building, and it will have to come down. You are the face of the person I'm looking at for the first time, because this is the first time that we've actually had the opportunity of speaking to somebody who has a plan to get this building back in operation. And I'm telling you, I'm looking at you, and I'm saying, I don't see why this wouldn't work. I don't see why it shouldn't work. But at the same time, hold up, don't, but at the same time, it also needs to be a, a plan that does encompass and, and embrace the community. I'm not sure why it went from, and I don't know if you even know this, it went from a complete yes, we're all excited, to now absolutely not, and a divide. I don't know what happened in between there, but if you can find out what happened to repair that, I think that you might be coming in with people supporting you on that, uh, that December fifth date. And that's what I would hope, because it makes our lives a lot easier, and it certainly would be something that is beneficial from my perspective to make sure that a building isn't gonna just continue down the path of deterioration. We've got zero dollars in our budget to fix that building this year. That means that we will not have anything in the cycle until maybe the budget of next year. And best, guess what? Depending on what's happening in the city, that's probably not gonna be at the top of the list of priorities, considering that we have to do things for the masses as a whole. So it, it really is, I'm looking at you, and I'm saying, you know, you've done, you've done a great job of coming to us with a plan to get something done that we didn't have before tonight. And so I, I wanna say I respect you for that, and I hope that maybe by just giving that little bit of breathing space, that everybody will come together and make, and truly understand that there's gonna be nobody occupying that building for at least a year, if not longer, could be five years. Um, or it could be that the building comes down because it, it actually is deteriorating to that point where it becomes condemnable. So if we don't do this, we may end up losing any opportunity in the future. And that's kind of the way that I'm looking at this, just, just in how things happen in, in Delray. You're gonna jump in, I hear ya.
Only because I wanna back you up. I wanna, wanna back you up on, on some of the things that you, that you said, because there's, again, just so much misinformation. We have no plans for that property. So when she's, when the mayor says it's gonna sit there, so we have individuals that have stated, we have plans, we have no plans, we have set no funding aside, we are not using it as a staffing building, we don't care how much the property is, we haven't gotten it appraised because none of us are interested in, in selling it. So for anyone that has said, oh, it's the call, it's, oh, they know the, the property is, that doesn't, it doesn't matter to us, we are not, that property shouldn't be used for anything other than a community benefit, especially one that incorporates the veterans. We all agree, I think, on that. We don't, there's no plan to sell it, there's no plan to use it, develop it, put housing there, put offices there, zero. So I just wanna, I just wanna set that clear. But I think there is a benefit to being on the clock. We, we haven't had a deadline, neither side. Both sides are in mediation, but we don't have a deadline to come, now we're, now we're probably for the first time gonna have a deadline. So when we have that shade meeting, and we're sitting there, we might be a little bit more aggressive in coming to the table, and hopefully, the, um, the legion will be a little bit more aggressive in responding and in coming to the table in a mediation, because we're gonna have a December fifth deadline, you know, for the first time, um, which could be help, which can be helpful.
Ms. Burns?
Yeah, I'll just say again, um, one of the things that you said at the beginning, Dupree, was that you, your goal was to work with the legion and yourself to make, make things happen, and that would be the perfect way to have that goal. So with this litigation, we really need to solve it so that that kind of, um, activity can proceed.
Mr. Long?
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who came out and spoke in regard to this issue tonight, expressly, Mr. Jackson. Ms. Jellin, could you clarify for me, does the pending lawsuit in any way preclude us from moving forward?
No.
Okay, just, just wanna make that clear. So I will support Vice Mayor's proposal to move this to the December fifth meeting, following a shade meeting where we can bring everyone to the table. But I'm gonna say, if nothing gets solved in that meeting, I will be voting to move forward with EJS Project. Because I believe that is the right thing to do at this point. And further, I want to ask if it's possible that we refund Mr. Jackson the twenty thousand dollar fee that he spent? Is that something we can direct?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand?
You can direct that.
I'd like to ask my colleagues...
Yes.
I would be in support of that.
Can I get a little clarity? So, just so we're clear, so...
Not, not everybody could be at the meeting first of all.
But let's wait. I mean, is that something that...
Let's talk, we're gonna be talking about this in shade, and I think that that's part of that conversation. And I also, because we're just doing things on the fly here, I just think, think we just need to give ourselves a little bit of a thing, rest, and also, please speak to who's gonna be at the meeting, because shade meetings are not with everybody coming, so...
Correct. So, um, we can schedule a shade meeting before the December fifth City Commission meeting, but as you know, the shade meeting is just the people sitting up here in a conference room directing me and our outside counsel as to how you would like to see this case settled. As you know, you know, we can make offers, there's no guarantee that they're gonna be accepted, they're not gonna be countered, or they're not gonna be ignored. So, you know, while I understand that you do wanna put this on December fifth, I don't, you're not gonna have any answer by December fifth. Because if we have the shade meeting, of course, we'll reach out to the Council for the Legion, we'll relay the offer. Typically, you give thirty days for an offer to, for them to meet, for them to review it, and they have a board also that has to approve the offer. So there's a little bit of time that's, that's gonna have to, and we can do the shade meeting earlier, you know, we can do it this week if we want.
I think you're right, but we're also heading into Thanksgiving and those types of things too, so I think you're exactly right. But let's do the shade meeting, and then let's see where we get, but I, I think you're right, there's no way we can come to a conclusion and have both sides understand, having an understanding by that first meeting.
What's a date that makes sense?
It would be thirty days. It would be probably the first, the first meeting in January, I think, is realistic.
To bring this...
Everything done, yes. I mean, like, we have, you've, you've talked to them, and we've gotten to that conclusion.
We can't aim for the twelfth. I know that's our last meeting of the year. Now, again, both sides know, we're, we're, we're working against the clock here. So hopefully, they wouldn't take the full thirty days.
I know, I agree, but again, and, you know, we can't dictate if they're, what they're gonna do with an offer.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we say that it will be the twelfth with the exception of that we don't get to that point where we can put it on there, and then we'll just make it the next meeting? Because we don't wanna bring it in like we are right now and not do anything and have to push it off. We don't wanna do that again. So what we wanna do is, we wanna be ready for it. So let's shoot for the twelfth, that gives you, it's very condensed timing, but if we can get it done and get it on the twelfth, that'd be great for the end of the year.
So we're gonna, we're gonna table this item to, um, December twelfth?
Yep.
Um, and then, when, when did you wanna have the shade meeting, though? Do you wanna...
As soon as possible, because that'll get you moving forward.
So we can tie it at the end if that's correct.
At the end, yep.
So why do we have to wait for the shade meeting to discuss reimbursing Mr. Jackson?
Oh, no, 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 that you can discuss right now.
I, I, I was just saying, there hasn't been a decision made or not, like, I'd be in favor of that, I just don't know, is now the time to...
I mean, has staff put in twenty-five thousand dollars worth of work on, on Mr. Dupree, on EJS projects?
No, I mean, that, that set amount, he had to pay that because that's what's in the policy, but that's typically for, you know, the golf course renovation where, and not to diminish what you propose, but those were like this thing. And that, that had a lot of staff time outside council and things like that. So I don't think that there would be an objection if you wanted to direct staff to reimburse the money.
If you feel this is an appropriate time, I would, I would second...
I think you have your, I think you have your, um...
I don't have an issue. So we'll direct that.
Okay, so, uh, we need a motion to, uh...
Motion to Table Resolution Number Two Three Five Dash Two Three, contingent on, um...
I think you can do it for D. S.
Negotiations?
Second.
All right, call the roll, please. Thank you. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bulston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes. Okay, thank you all so much. All right, moving on to nomination for appointment on the site plan, this would be for Mr. Long.
I'd like to nominate, nominate Adam Nelson, please.
Second.
Any concerns, questions, seeing done, call the roll. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bulston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrollia?
Yes. All right, moving on to public hearings and second readings, ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-three. So Mayor A, B, and C are all related, if I can just read them all together?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. In ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, annexing into the City of Delray Beach, sorry. Annexing into the City of Delray Beach, a parcel of land located west of Barwick Road, immediately north of Lake Worth Drainage District, L three-one canal, and immediately south of one hundred and thirty-third Road South, which measures approximately five point oh eight acres, as more particularly described herein, and is situated contiguous to the existing municipal limits of the City of Delray Beach, providing for inclusion of this parcel into the city boundaries and a redefinition of the city boundaries pursuant to Section one seven one point oh four four subsection two Florida statutes, providing for conformance with all voluntary annexation procedures as set forth in Section one seventy-one point oh four four Florida statutes, providing for filing with Palm Beach County and the Department of State, providing a conflicts clause and a separability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-three, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida.
Oh my. Special guest star.
Sorry, it's right.
Welcome back.
Adopting a small-scale land use map amendment redesignating a portion of land measuring approximately five point oh eight acres located west of Barwick Road, immediately north of Lake Worth Drainage District, L thirty-one canal, and immediately south of one hundred and thirty-third Road South, as more particularly described herein, from Palm Beach County medium residential to low-density residential pursuant to the provisions of the Community Planning Act, Florida Statute Section one sixty-three point three one eight seven, providing a conflicts clause and a separability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-three, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, rezoning a portion of land measuring approximately five point oh eight acres located west of Barwick Road, immediately north of Lake Worth Drainage District, L thirty-one canal, and immediately south of one hundred and thirty-third Road South, from Palm Beach County Agricultural Residential to single-family R one A, as more particularly described herein, amending the City of Delray Beach zoning map July six twenty twenty-one, providing a conflicts clause and a separability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Just a reminder, these are all second reading, this last one is quasi-judicial.
Okay, very good. So, um, are we gonna do this together?
Yes, we'll do all three together.
All right, so I'm gonna go ahead then and read the quasi-judicial rules into the record for that final one. This hearing shall be conducted in accordance with quasi-judicial rules. The applicant and the city will shall be allowed fifteen minutes each to present their case. The public shall be allowed to speak for three minutes each, or a maximum of six minutes if the person represents an organization or a group of people who are present but agree not to speak. The city commission, staff, and the applicant may be allowed to cross-examine a witness. The city or the applicant will be allowed to offer rebuttal testimony. The decision to approve or deny an application or appeal may not be legally made upon personal views as to whether a project is good project or not, nor may a decision be based on the numbers of citizens who, who support or oppose a particular project. The law requires that all decisions must be made based on whether the project meets the requirements of law, the comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. If there's anybody here that we're gonna, that's going to be speaking to ordinance, it would be the third one, twenty-three dash twenty-three, please stand up and be sworn
By the authority vested in use and notary of the State of Florida, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, so let's talk about ex parte communication, starting with Mr. Long, anything?
I spoke with Mr. Schiller.
Okay, Mr.?
Mr. Schiller, the applicant, and there's a lot of emails about something postponing or something like that on the server.
So Mr. Schiller and the emails on the server. Where did he come from?
I don't know. Did you not see him write? Did you not see him come in?
No.
Oh, okay.
All right. Just, I spoke to Mr. Schiller and a lot of neighbors.
Yeah, I have, anything that I have is on the server. So at this point in time, we're gonna have the city enter the case, I'm sorry, the file into record.
Hi, good evening, Rebecca Dosseri, Development Services for the record. We're entering into the record file twenty-two-three dash one oh nine, file twenty-two-three dash one oh eight, and file twenty-two-three dash one oh seven.
Very good. Mr. Schiller, you're up.
Uh, thank you so much, Mayor.
I'm sorry, there's just some people standing, it's gonna be a few minutes, so you might wanna sit down.
Are you gonna be speaking on this? Okay, so you can have a seat because it's gonna be, after the presentation, we'll call for ya. Thank you.
Because, Harry, it's fifteen. Are you gonna ask for more time?
Oh yeah, I was just wanted to, um, so the rules, I had a chance to read them, give quasi-judicial items twenty minutes, and then each original agenda, it says twenty.
No, they got you.
Um, but anyway, um, I, I would ask to have twenty. We have two other items that would, would give us ten minutes each, so we just asked for twenty minutes for the whole presentation instead of forty.
Sure.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, my name is Neil Schiller with Government Law Group, um, here tonight representing Natali Builders and Cocoon Development for the annexation land use and rezoning of four-five-nine-four-one-thirty-third Road South. With me tonight is my planner, Mike Cavelli, and our traffic engineer, John Donaldson. So, uh, we're asking you to please approve the annexation land use and rezoning. The land use map amendment is from MR five, which is Palm Beach County, to low-density, which is the city, and the rezoning from agricultural residential in the county to R-1A in the city. Uh, we intend to develop sixteen single-family homes. Uh, that twenty-two number is the max allowed by the zoning district. We have a proposed floor area ratio of three-point-two, uh, with major improvements to one-thirty-third Road South, including a twenty-five-foot right-of-way dedication and a five-foot sidewalk. This pink area is the site, uh, here's a closer view, and you can see all of the properties around the site that are within the city of Delray Beach. And, uh, in fact, their only property that's not in the city, that's not the subject property, is the Landscape Services all the way to properties to the west. Uh, it's this truly an enclave of Palm Beach County, something that your comprehensive plan speaks ad nauseam about, uh, and we are seeking to bring this into the city and, and remove this enclave. I do wanna, want to note that the property next door to us, which is called Ocean Ridge Rentals, is Zoned RM eight. And I'm bringing this up because the city previously owned this property. And in fact, not only did they own it, but they sold it for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increase in what they bought it for. And at the time it was sold, the real estate agent stood up, stood up right before you and this microphone, previous commissioner two ago, and said that they wanted to do eight to the acre and maybe even twelve to the acre with workforce housing density bonuses. Uh, that sale was approved five to nothing unanimously. There's also a couple myths and facts I want to address, uh, right before we get out, uh, get into it, which is, um, the impact to public services, to police services, and to fire services. There has been conjecture that this project is going to create an additional impact, and your staff report in both instances said that this project is not creating that additional demand. In fact, uh, the fire department said it doesn't require an additional staffing, and the police department said that the growth of development in the whole western corridor, not this sixteen-unit project, would necessitate an additional officer added to the police unit to maintain current response levels. So these are TAC comments, this is Technical Advisory Committee that the city puts out and gives to developers, they also make them public. So we looked at Delray Townhomes, and Patrick Figarella, who's here today in front of you, specifically asked them to design one-hundred-and-thirty-third Road South as it is today, as we're, excuse me, as we're proposing it, and as they proposed it, which is nine-foot travel lanes on the corner of Barwick Road that extend and extend to, uh, ten-foot travel lanes, all with five-foot sidewalks. This is one-hundred-and-thirty-third Road South, uh, and again, I'm sure many of you have seen this, and this is what we're trying to do with one-hundred-and-thirty-third Road South. You can see clearly from Barwick to my client's property, eastern property line, that is nine feet of existing right, uh, twenty-five feet, excuse me, of existing right-of-way, nine-foot travel lanes with a five-foot sidewalk that's prepared. Uh, the applicant is proposing improvements to one-hundred-and-thirty-third Road South with the five-foot sidewalk, fifty feet of right-of-way dedicated along both project frontages, and repair and repaving of one-thirty-third Road South, all on private funds, on, and not on the public funds. So these are TAC comments from our project, one-hundred-and-thirty-third Road South. And again, the city engineer agrees that nine-foot travel lanes are adequate for this road. Uh, and additionally, the applicant agrees to make all of the improvements necessary, again, private dollars on the developers, nothing to do with the city. I do wanna point out that, uh, the city engineer is here, so I'd specifically ask him questions about whether or not these nine-foot travel roads are adequate, or travel lanes, excuse me, are adequate, as are the ten-foot travel lane and the five-foot sidewalk. And then I know your fire department chief is here, Chief Tomy, who sat in us with a meeting, uh, last week, at the end of the week, to determine that there is adequate fire access to one-hundred-and-thirty-third Road South. Not only can an apparatus get there, but they can make the turn. So we had our traffic engineer obviously look at, um, what, how much traffic this would generate, uh, for the development. Uh, we've submitted our traffic statement to Palm Beach County, and they came back and they not only approved it, but, um, they said we were under. So for instance, the project is a hundred-and-sixty vehicles per day total with fifteen peak hour. That's less, uh, than seven-hundred-and-fifty or fifty peak hour with the project. A vehicle every, this would ends up resulting in a vehicle every one minute and twenty seconds that is going, traveling the road, which is more than enough time for them to traverse this portion of three-hundred feet, uh, that is the nine-foot travel lane. Um, the proposed one-thirty-third Road South is safer than the existing with volumes that are adequate for an eighteen-foot roadway and five-foot sidewalk, and ASHTO and NCHRP both agree that nine-foot travel lanes are acceptable for low volume. If you have any other questions about this, our traffic engineer is here, and I ask you to ask, ask him any questions about that. Again, the TAC comments from the Delray Townhome Project show that, um, nine-foot lanes are acceptable. We're doing exactly what the city has asked us to do, to a T, on our dime. Here is, uh, part of the staff report, and it says that the connections to the sidewalk network to the exterior of the site via the new sidewalk that is proposed along one-thirty-third Road South, which are thereby provides pedestrian connection to Barwick Road where it currently does not exist. These are a brand-new sidewalk with brand-new pedestrian amenities down one-hundred-and-thirty-third Road South, which will connect to your Barwick Road improvements that are you're currently out to bid for right now. They are out to bid for pedestrian, uh, I think pedestrian improvements and, and bicycle So annexation. Uh, again, we're moving from MR five in the county to low-density one-to-five in the city, the zoning district from agricultural residential to R-1A, which allows single-family homes. Uh, the density permitted is up to five units per acre in Palm Beach County, in Delray Beach, the same, and proposed is sixteen single-family homes under Palm Beach County, would be sixteen single-family homes here. Uh, your annexation findings is, um, is two-four-five-C, whether or not this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, the annexation is, you have an objective in your comprehensive plan, NDC three-point-three, which says continue to annex unincorporated areas within the planning area. This is a map directly from your comp plan, which shows that this is, uh, within the city's planning area, and this is an area to be annexed. This is a voluntary annexation, so we are doing this in accordance with Florida statutes one-seventy-one point zero-four-four. Um, a petition for voluntary annexation was submitted by our planner, this is from your staff report, on behalf of Cocoon Development, and pursuant to one-seven-one point zero-four-four-five, the subject property is surrounded by the city of Delray Beach on all sides, and the property is accessible via one-thirty-third Road South. We meet those, uh, considerations in the state statute. Annexation considerations, again, in your comprehensive plan, uh, neighborhood, NDC three-point-two-point-three says, when you provide water and sewer facilities to unincorporated areas, uh, in a manner consistent with city policies, uh, it should be eligible for annexation and should proceed, uh, the provision of services. And I believe that provision of services already exists to that property today. So as far as the land use designation, uh, when you bring a parcel into the city through annexation, you have to give it a land use and a zoning. So we're seeking the land use to go from MR five to low-density one-to-five. Uh, that's up to five to the units per acre, and that's what we're proposing. The required findings, consistency with the land use map. Here, right from table NDC one, you've seen this many times, 'cause I've shown it many times, variety of projects, but low-density residential is preferred zoning district to implement, that vision is R-one. R-1A, R-1AA, R-1AAA, uh, we meet that section of the criteria. Concurrenty. So traffic, there is a net increase of twenty peak-hour trips with the proposed rezoning, sufficient capacity in the school system, sufficient capacity in water, sewage, sewage, and solid waste. Drainage will be addressed at site plan, and I may remind you, this is not a site plan. We are not here before a site plan, we haven't even submitted a site plan or a final plat. Both of those items will come before the city commission for final approval. Consistency, oops, consistency with the comprehensive plan, let me get my spot. Um, there are multiple policies in which we're consistent. There we go. Uh, NDC one-point-one, NDC one-point-one-point-thirteen, or NDC one-point-two-five are just a, uh, example of three different policies we're consistent with. Uh, and same with compliance, again, as I told you, we'll submit a site plan that complies with the LDRs if these actions are approved tonight. Uh, for the rezoning, I wanna call up Mr. Mike Cavelli, who's gonna walk us in and, and continue to provide competent substantial evidence for the rezoning.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Hi, Mike Cavelli, Cavelli Design, twelve-oh-nine South Swinton Avenue. Got you. You're good, okay. Um, all right, um, in terms of rezoning, uh, in section two-point-four-point-five-D-two, um, the, the proposed zoning should be, um, allowed, with, consistent with the density under the land use designation. Um, in this particular case, the land use designation is five units to the acre, that's the lowest designation that the, the comprehensive plan has. The next higher is, um, the medium density. If you look at the map, you'll see that the areas in yellow are all the low-density designation, and, uh, the orangier areas are the medium density. So you can see that, that, the, the low-density designation is consistent, and that the, um, the proposed zoning is consistent with that. Again, under, from the table, under the comprehensive plan, it talks about, um, the implementing zoning district, and if you look to the left, the circle, it says low-density, um, up to five the acre, and you see on the right, the circle, it says preferred, is R-one, um, you know, which is, which is one of the three preferred zonings in this area. RL is inappropriate, and PRD is inappropriate for this particular property, so the only choice for a preferred zoning is with an R, R-one prefix. Um, again, in three-point-one-point-one, um, you have all of the items for concurrency, traffic, there's a letter from the, from Palm Beach County, the schools, there's a letter from, from the school, um, water and sewer has been confirmed by the, the city, solid waste by waste management, and we will comply with drainage. Again, consistency, uh, the staff report has fourteen items that are listed for consistency from the goals, objectives, and policies from, from the comprehensive plan. All of those items can have positive findings. And as far as compliance, we did, we have prepared a site plan, we have prepared a, a plat, that's the next phase in the process. It is compliance with the LDRs, and there are no waivers or variances required for that. Section three-point-two-point-two has, um, four items, I believe, that, that are applicable. In this particular case, they're saying to choose a zoning that is consistent with the development patterns in the area. We have RM eight to the west and R, R-one triple-A to the east. This, this site as an R-1A becomes a transitional zoning that goes from the higher densities to the west to the lower densities to the east, and likewise, from the higher densities from the south to the, to the, the lower densities to, to the north. So the R-1A is compatible with, uh, the surrounding zonings. The next item under three-point-two-point-two deals with automotive commercial, so that's not applicable, and then, and then, uh, the next item is, deals with strip commercial, and that's not applicable. And the last item talks about, um, the, the zoning being compatible with adjacent uses, and if it's not compatible, you can do mitigation through buffers and things like that. So it isn't a hard, fast rule, there is, there is, um, um, flexibility in terms of doing compatibility buffers. In the, in the site plan and the plat that we've, we've designed for this, um, we have provided buffers to the north and to the east, that'll be seen in the next, in the next round of, of plans, uh, should we get through this. Um, and so the R-1A zoning is a compatible, uh, zoning for the adjacent and nearby land uses.
Perfect. Thank you, Mike. Um, so as I wrap up, there's a couple of things, uh, to point out. Again, I highly, uh, recommend that you ask your fire chief whether or not, uh, Delray Beach Fire can actually access one-hundred-and-thirty-third Road South, um, because he will say that it can. Uh, secondly, um, I would ask your city engineer, are nine-foot travel lanes and expanding to a ten-foot travel lanes exactly what you wanted on one-hundred-and-thirty-third Road South? He said it multiple times, he put it in writing at least twice. Um, let's talk about density. We're proposed three-point-two, uh, when we could go up to five. Third, neighbor opposition. I understand there's a lot of neighbor opposition. However, uh, I understand a lot of that opposition was based on traffic on Barwick Road. And we just heard tonight how a school employee or somebody's employee, I think, or your employee, is actually getting people through Barwick Elementary within ten minutes, that was testified here, when he accepted the award. So, that's a plus. Secondly, you have an RFP out for bicycle and pedestrian improvements on Barwick Road. Third, at the last hearing, the president of Sable Lakes said, "We're not against the project." On the record, he said that. Uh, secondly, or fourthly, fifthly, um, I spoke to the president of Barwick Ranches yesterday, uh, Peter Covano, didn't really know much about the project, I sent him my PowerPoint, and within a half an hour, he called me back and said he thought it was a good project. So I'm asking you, again, to approve the land use zoning and the annexation here. This is not the end of the conversation. This is frankly, in the middle, if not the beginning. We have a final plat, final plat to go through and a site plan approval to go through. We haven't even submitted those documents yet. We hope we'll have the chance to submit them after tonight's vote, and we ask you, uh, again, to vote for us. Thank you.
Thank you. To the staff, it's Dosseri.
Good evening again, Rebecca Dosseri, for the record, Development Services. I'm gonna wait here a moment while the presentation comes up. Okay, again, the project, or the, the subject property is located on the west side of Barwick Road. Um, it is currently occupied with a single-family dwelling unit, and it's five-point-oh-eight acres. Just to give some context for what is around the, the property, Bexley Park is to the northwest, Barwick Ranch Estates to the north, and then Sable Lakes Road across, um, Barwick Road, Country Manners, and Lake Forest to the south. So again, if this request is approved, the, the land use map would change, uh, the future annexation area is designated, uh, low-density, which means that the city's projections for growth and facility needs are all based on the, the presupposition that this would come in as low-density, and that is what the applicant is requesting. And the zoning map would, again, change from Palm Beach County AR to R-1A. So the, um, this is just a quick comparison of the existing and proposed land use and zoning. The, uh, it was mentioned that, um, the property could develop under Palm Beach County with the max number of units the same as the subject request, but it should be noted that agricultural residential zoning has much stricter, um, regulations regarding lot sizes, so to achieve that maximum density, even if the applicant were to develop under Palm Beach County regulations, there would need to be a rezoning request likely to get the same number that's being requested here. The request comes in under the Florida statutes governing, uh, annexation, and the request meets all of the required findings, the voluntary petition, uh, it's contiguous with the city boundary, it's compact, and also that it's, um, eliminating an enclave that exists currently in the city. In the comprehensive plan, we have a map of future annexation areas, and this, this property is designated for future annexation. We have a number of policies about, um, accepting annexation requests when they arise, um, and then providing water and sewer facilities in unincorporated areas at the demand of the applicant. So, um, if the applicant was to request it under the county, we would be obligated to provide the water and sewer services, but it also calls in our policies to get an annexation agreement first. So this is sort of a chicken and an egg scenario that exists here, but, um, our policies call for annexation. So I think a valuable consideration here is maybe not as much whether or not we should annex the property, but under the terms that it would be best to annex the property. So the low-density R-one zoning is the preferred implementing zoning district of, um, low-density land use. And these are the required findings for approving a development application. Concurrenty, um, is evaluated as well, and it's determined to meet, um, traffic, water, sewer, solid waste, and school concurrency. On the following slides, we will discuss traffic a little bit, that's been a hot topic. Um, and we'll also discuss comprehensive plan consistency and, um, compliance with the LDRs. So first, um, one-thirty-third Road South, uh, as it is now, it's, has a twenty-five-foot right-of-way. The pavement width varies currently between seventeen to twenty-two feet. The ultimate right-of-way for city roads is fifty feet, so there will be a twenty-five-foot right-of-way dedication required when the applicant comes in with a plat, and, um, they will be providing... a plat, and they will be providing, or they will be footing the bill for the construction of the roadway and any utility improvements. This slide here is not a section proposed for this road, but it's a sample section that was prepared for the northwest neighborhoods that uses the same roadway width, where it nine-foot travel lanes and a five-foot sidewalk. And the Green Book for Engineering Standards does say that nine-foot lanes are acceptable under certain circumstances. And then to provide some context for the traffic volumes that the road could potentially handle, the property to the west has an application in for 25 townhomes. They'll be going to the Site Planner Review and Appearance Board for their likely final consideration on November 29th. We haven't had any inquiries about the three-acre property to the west of that, which has an advisory land use of low-density. And then again, the subject property has five acres, which would result in a density if you do the calculation on the gross of 22 units. But as we'll discuss a little further, the, the actual number of lots that could be built is less when you take away dedications. Our policy about comprehensive plan consistency, oh, sorry, I skipped a slide, I think. So for our comprehensive plan consistency, we're supposed to apply the most restrictive residential zoning district based on the existing development patterns surrounding the subject property. So this excerpt here from section 434K is where we have our development standards for single-family properties. So as you can see, within the R1A designation, there's a number of different R1A sub, or subclassifications that range in size from 7,500 square feet all the way up to 12,500, and the applicant is requesting that R1A, which has 7,500 square foot lot minimum. So related to this policy, we looked at some of the different surrounding zoning districts, the R1A districts, to see what could potentially be built. With the requested zoning, when you subtract the dedication on the roadway and then the Lake Worth Drainage District easement, you could max it out only at 16 units, or 16 lots. If you went with the R1A, R1 AA zoning to the north, they could do 12 lots. And with the R1 AAA to the east, then you could do 10 lots. And I think it's important to note that to the, the west, the RM8 zoning, if it was developed as single-family, it would be subject to the R1A standards. And then Sable Lakes across Barwick Road, the lot sizes vary between 45 feet and 90 feet in width, so it's not incompatible with the surrounding development. And we have a few more policies here about comprehensive plan consistency. We're subject to apply the advisory land use designation and use infill development opportunities to provide more housing development that is consistent with the character of the existing development. Regarding compliance with the LDR, any proposed developments in R1A would comply with these standards that are provided here, and with the applicant's stated intent of conventionally cited single-family detached homes, it would be in line with what they're requesting. There are, in our LDR, valid reasons for approving a zoning change, and two of these apply. At annexation, we have to apply land use and zoning, and it has to be, the requested zoning has to be a similar intensity allowed on the land use map and appropriate based on the neighborhood. So there is a number, are a number of different zoning districts that surround the property, so it is similar with the adjacent development. These additional standards for rezoning, action, two of these standards apply. As we showed on some previous slides, there is a variety of zoning that surrounds the property. So there's not necessarily a consistent answer for what is the most compatible, because you have a lot of different R1 districts that surround it. Oh, I'm going the wrong way, I'm sorry. And again, the land use and zoning is compatible with what surrounds the property already. And this is just, again, a, a map of, of what is around the subject property. This went to the Planning and Zoning Board on August 21st, and there was a vote to deny all three requests. The land use and annexation didn't need a vote of recommendation of approval to proceed, but the rezoning did. So again, they appealed, and the commission voted to overturn the, the appeal. First reading was on September 18th, and we are here today for a second reading. So that concludes the Development Services presentation, and we're available for questions.
Very good. Well, now is the time for those that were coming up beforehand to come up and speak to this issue. So we're going to invite anybody in the audience that would like to come up and say, speak to this. You need to, first of all, say your name, your address. Let us know that you have been sworn if you're going to talk about any of the zoning, because that's what that was about. The other issues are not required to be sworn in. And you'll have three minutes.
And Mayor, if they can just confirm that they, they did not speak last week?
Oh, yes. And also that you did not speak last week when we had an open forum to do that.
Is it, I just push it? Oh, they brought it up. Oh, okay.
Going to have a presentation? Okay, great.
Dear Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Beverly Wilson. I live at 1640 Satin Leaf Court. I have lived off Barwick Road for 66 years. I have lived in Sable Lakes for 28 years. My girls attended Banyan Creek Elementary School the first year it was opened in 1988. At that time, it was walkers, bikers, buses, and a handful of parent drivers. Banyan Creek now is a magnet school drawing students from other locations. Therefore, parent drop-off and pickup has caused longstanding traffic issues that has spanned many years. Residents, delivery trucks, service companies, and landscapers, et cetera, and regular through traffic are not able to access the communities or their destinations during these times. The workshop commissioner meeting November 7th, 2023, the Fire Marshal addressed issues on narrow alleyways that cannot be properly accessed by the city's fire department vehicles and equipment. During pickup, parents start to line up around 1:30 PM, then, traffic then is totally stopped until 2:05 when tra, school is released and then slowly starts moving. Many through-traffic drivers, including buses, are crossing the double-yellow line to go around to stop traffic. We all, as residents off Barwick Road, have to plan our day around getting in and out of the neighborhoods around this traffic congestion. The city's 2021 Speed and Traffic Study reported that drivers are going over the speed limit, and in that three-year period, there have been 26 crashes, including six with injuries for which caused serious injuries. Two years later, how many more have happened and continue to happen? Just last Friday, November 9th, at 7:40 AM, an accident happened at the intersection of Barwick Road and 133rd Road South. With Banyan Creek Schools, students in mind, a proposed improvement is seen in the city's submitted grant funding application in February 2022 for a project on Barwick Road from Lake Ida Road to Sable Lakes Road North. Aims to construct traffic calming improvements to reduce vehicular speeds and provide sidewalk and shared use paths to improve pedestrian bicycle sa, safety along Barwick Road. However, this proposed measure involves narrowing the roadway and introducing landscape pinch points behind the raised curves that will cause drivers to slow down. The speeding generally happens outside school drop-off and pickup hours. Introducing these proposed measures will help with the speeding, but will likely increase the congestion on Barwick Road and other connected side streets during school drop-off and pickup hours. A designated school lane and another through lane traffic from the south of Lake Ida Road and north to the L31 Canal can help to mitigate the perpetual traffic issues that present a significant safety issue that already exists for the communities here. To build additional housing on an alleyway in the middle of a school zone that may exacerbate longstanding traffic issues should not be considered before these existing traffic issues, issues have been thoroughly resolved. Safety of our students and Delray Beach residents should be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-oh, sorry. Can somebody tell me how to use this? She had more slides. Yeah. If you could have just advanced to her second slide, that would be great.
They don't have numbers. One has Barwick Road, ground application. One is, they don't have numbers.
Okay, that's okay. That's okay.
Police traffic. I'll just open another one.
No worries.
One that you want to read?
And which, which one do I push to advance? Thank you.
Is that one?
That's fine, yes, thank you so much. That's exactly what I want.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Say your name and address and...
My name is Christine Carls. I live at 4021 Satin Leaf Court in Sable Lakes. It is true that we do not oppose this development, but there was a big "but" at the end of that sentence. We don't oppose this development after traffic on Barwick Road has been improved and made more safe for our residents of Sable Lakes, as well as our students and teachers at Banyan Creek Elementary, excuse me, elementary. We have over 1,000 residents in Sable Lakes, 900-plus students and staff at Banyan Creek. This is just the latest example of all of the safety hazards that we face on Barwick Road. I happen to work in downtown Delray, and I'm one of those residents that coordinates my schedule to miss school traffic. We very much appreciate that you're looking at traffic on Barwick Road. Unfortunately, the gentleman that was recognized earlier, I think he works a little bit farther down by Lake Ida, so he's not really helping the situation near our neighborhood. And what I want to emphasize, I did not speak last week, is people are crossing the double yellow line, including school buses. It is a very unsafe situation, and we would urge you to pause on this development until safety is addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. You don't have a, do you have a?
Good evening, excuse me, no, no power.
Okay, there you go.
Good evening, Mayor Petrolia and Commissioners. My name is Lori Vinnicor. I live at 10626 La Reyna Road, Delray Beach, Florida. Often come into the city, but I live in the agricultural reserve. I am the president of the Alliance of Delray Residential Associations. We represent more than 100 communities between the Everglades and the ocean. And some of our communities are directly affected by this particular project. The concern is the infrastructure coming concurrent with, of course, the increase in density. And of course, the density is an issue. It would appear that the fairest, the fairest district designation would be the R1AAA, and I see the 10 lots. That would be probably the fairest, is the, is the adjacent, the adjacent parcels. We are very concerned about that parcel to the west, which will have an impact also on the infrastructure there, the three acres, which has a little higher density. So, but whatever you do, you, whatever you approve tonight, I know that they are asking for 16 units. Whatever you approve, whether it's R1AAA, 10 units, or, or, or up to the 16 units, please make sure that the applicant does agree to place that as a restriction on the land that they cannot come back and ask for anymore. Thank you so much. It's been a long night.
Thank you. Yeah, you're right. Yes, sir.
Michael Weiner with the business address to 611 Broken Sound Parkway. First would like a point of order. The applicant asked to double his time, and he did get 20 minutes. I would ask that my client, Eva Klein and Sean Canfield, be allowed to double their time as well. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. I did put in a letter on October 26th establishing that we're an aggrieved party. We are bordering the project. If I could have six minutes, I will be over this faster than I will be trying to explain all of the law that is associated with being an aggrieved and affected party.
We don't, we don't have that type of status, but in the past, we have given Mr. Weiner six minutes when he does make the request.
I don't have a problem.
Hey, that's fine.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So for the record, just so the record is complete, I did give a letter on October 26th, 2023, which was also sent to the Commissioners on November 6th, 2023. Just want to make sure it's part of the record, because I noticed it wasn't mentioned specifically in the ex parte. I represent Eva Klein and Sean Canfield. They're at 13387 Barwick Road. Their retirement home that they purchased has a east-west line with this project. It sits on a 38,000-square-foot lot, and it sits next to four other homes, and all four of them together, five homes in a row, form that east-west line with the project. But let me be clear, as others have said, we're not against building single-family homes. We're not against the project in, as it stands, as in its present form, but we have problems with the zoning. So if you look at the situation, you will see that there are problems with the zoning in that they've gotten 7,500 square-foot lots. That is, um, less than 20% of the 38,000 square-foot lots that the border on the east-west forms with those other five houses. That just doesn't match up with our comprehensive plan, and I know staff has come to a different conclusion, but maybe if you hear the words, and I'll try to do this quickly, you'll agree that it just can't meet the comprehensive plan at 7,500 square feet. HC, I'm going to skip the designations. Let me just read the words. Improve the street design to encourage reduced vehicle speeds. Transform existing streets by using techniques such as complete street design. Promote good design in new housing. Foster growth without adversely impacting existing residential neighborhood character. And the one that I like the most, there are many more, is apply the most restrictive residential zoning district that is appropriated based on existing development patterns. So with that in mind, we can see that the zoning designation that's been chosen, that is the one that gives the smallest lots, does not meet the comprehensive plan. So if we're going to make this meet the comprehensive plan, and we are going to annex it, and we aren't going to give in a future land use map, then we've got to do some things differently. So to assure this excellence that is required under our comprehensive plan, we have to annex it not at the lowest one of 7,500 square feet, which I pointed out is only one-fifth of the size of these 38,000 square feet. But we have to select a different category. All of what Neil said was that we just have to select a category, and even listed that these are the possible categories. So there is good reason to select R-1-AAA, which means that it's a 12,500-square-foot lot minimum. Solves a lot of the problems, solves some of the other things that other people have talked about at the microphone, and gives us the kind of quality and transition that really should be built in this particular area. I'm not saying it has to be exactly the same. Don't forget, our lots are 38,000 square feet. This is still a third of the size. It's just not a lot that could be 86 by 86 feet. Now notice, Neil was at the microphone, he's a very good lawyer, understands this. He said, "You know what? You haven't seen the, the site plan. You haven't seen the plat." And by the way, there's also a subdivision requirement. I'm sure he'll be familiar with that when it comes up. So what you're doing by passing all three of them tonight is, is you're letting it out of the box. We all know that sooner or later, it gets down to checking the boxes and meeting the numbers. Tonight, it's about legislative as to two of them, and then zoning on quasi-judicial. You get a chance to control some things. So by going to R1 AAA, you're going to have greater control. They've talked about the fact that, well, they can't fit in more than 16, but if you do the math, 7,500 gets you to 28. Now, we don't have the plan. We don't even know what the plan's going to be, and there is a chance that Mr. Schiller and Mr. Cavelli wouldn't even be the people presenting it. It could get stuck for a year. All of that's possible. So under those circumstances, we suggest that you take control. You can do that one of two ways. You can postpone, maybe even waive your rule that says you can only postpone once on the zoning part of it. Get it annexed in, give it a future land use map designation, or at least give it the most restrictive, that's what your policy says, the most restrictive residential zoning district. That's another thing you could do tonight. One more point, maybe I'll even get under that six minutes. What we've seen... What we've seen of the plan, well, one, we don't know about those buffers and Mr. Canfield and Ms. Klein are really interested in those buffers. Maybe that would've made a difference in their attitude, but we don't know them now and we don't know how they're gonna be set in the future. So by putting off the zoning, you at least have control for that. Um, the other thing is, is the road system inside. It's a very interesting road system, it ends in two hammerheads. It's, of course, as you would expect a developer, it's the least amount of road system they can get away with. But your code says six point one point two C eight, that you're not supposed to build dead-end streets. Look, we have five acres. It's, nothing is there yet, so please, we can design a better street system. Ten more seconds, I guess I still talk too long. Um, I can, was that three minutes or six minutes?
Six.
Okay. I'm sorry. Control it so that you really do control the density. And two, make it to superior plan and don't let them just come back for site plan and just come back for, for plat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mike Hurwitz, forty forty-one Satin Leaf Court. Um, just kinda wanna reiterate some of the points that have, that have been said already and just add one more. Um, safety is a major issue here, right? We have a, a Banyan Creek right there. We have a, uh, a guardrail on the side of the road to protect, to protect pedestrians that is damaged and hit and repaired and replaced often, which means cars are hitting it. Um, during school zone, uh, let out, um, somebody mentioned it earlier. There are cars zipping down the wrong side of the road, right, on the other side of the double yellow line. Um, progress is inevitable, there's empty land, people wanna develop it, it's a no-brainer. It's gonna get developed, whether it's today, tomorrow, or a year from now. But keeping that, that footprint as small as possible is of paramount importance, not just for this one piece of land, but we have a couple acres on the other side on Flavor Pick. That's gonna come into, to play at some point. We have another, uh, plot of land right next to us, that's gonna come into play. And all of these development projects, they add traffic in an area where there is no room for more traffic. You know, and, and ultimately, you know, keeping this sixteen down to ten, it helps, right? And, and the first slide of their presentation, it said sixteen homes with max twenty-five. So they're already opening the door to try to sneak more homes in, right? Which is just, you know, it's, it's, it's like the I pick. Well, you know, let's get this and ask for more later, you know, that's a separate topic. But, safety is a major concern here. I can't even talk about how important that is. There are kids running across the street, um, there are crossing guards, they do a really good job. Uh, I don't know about getting, uh, traffic, uh, waived in, in ten minutes during, during let-out time. I've never seen that happen in my entire life. Um, they do a good job, it can always be done better. It is an impossible situation and they're, please don't make it worse, that's all I got, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, public comment is closed. We're gonna move to, um, any cross-examination or rebuttal testimony by the applicant?
And that's only on the rezoning.
Only on the rezoning, that's right.
Absolutely, thank you.
I think, I think the only person that really spoke to that might've been Mr. Weiner, it was specific.
Yeah, and I'm gonna talk about the rezoning right now and I wanna, thank you so much. Um, I just have to go all the way to the back of my presentation. Uh, rezoning, all right, so, um, the, the issue, uh, we're not gonna talk about annexation and land use, we're gonna specifically talk about the density and the rezoning. Let me tell you why Mr. Weiner's wrong. Number one, this is RM eight to the south, this is RM eight to our west. It makes, and this is R one AAA to the east of our site. We are stepping down the intensity from east to west. We're doing sixteen single-family homes, uh, single-family homes, that makes it important. And we are also stepping down the intensity from north, from south to north. This is R one AA, R one AA, I believe, there are parts of it that are R one A, R one AAA. There's, we did, we looked at the densities and we looked at the minimum square footage and I'll show you right here. Here is a map of, uh, the properties around the subject property. And you can see, oops. There we go. Uh, here, Becksey Park, their lot size is seventy-five, uh, hundred square feet with a floor area of twelve hundred square feet. Uh, and this is Barwick Ranch, I think Barwick Ranches, ninety-five hundred squeet to fifteen hundred squeet. Fifteen hundred square feet, excuse me. Uh, here, the lot size is, this is multifamily residential. Uh, but you look what we're proposing, seventy-five hundred, uh, square feet and a floor area of a thousand. And to the next, next of us is, or adjacent to us, is twelve thousand five hundred square feet and twenty-two hundred. We are stepping back, we don't have to be one hundred percent, uh, consistent, I mean, consistency's the wrong word. We don't have to be exactly the same as to the west of us, absolutely not. This is why your planning staff is supportive of this application, because this actually treats the density that's already there. The density that another commission approved somehow when this property came in at MR eight. Eight to the acre. We're only asking for five to the acre, and by the way, that maximum wasn't the number of units that we're doing. That's the number of units that's allowed by the zoning district if approved. We have no intent of doing the maximum. I'm just telling, I'm explaining to, to you what the, what, what that max is. So again, we put it in our presentation a multitude of times. We have sixteen, we're, we would like to do sixteen single-family homes. The, uh, hammerhead that Mr. Weiner, um, is referring to, apparently it was in our planning and zoning board, uh, presentation, but as I've told you and as your staff can confirm, we haven't submitted a final, final site plan, we haven't submitted a final plat, and both of those items will come before this board again. And I would submit to you that the impacts of safety, traffic, one thirty-third road south are more appropriate for site plan approval and for plat. They're not appropriate for annexation, land use and zoning. And the last thing I'll say, this is, this site is the site that you have before you tonight. Whatever's happening on Flavor Pick, what's ever happened in the past on Barwick Road that's created to all this traffic, we didn't do it. We didn't approve MR five to, or MR eight to the next of us with multifamily townhomes. That's not what we're doing. We're trying to do something reasonable or responsible. And by the way, what gets lost in all this is that one thirty-third road south is gonna be improved and gonna be improved substantially, because my client's giving twenty-five feet of right-of-way dedication and the, the guy next to us, Ocean Ridge Rentals, he's giving twenty-five feet of right-of-way and we're doing a five-foot sidewalk and repaving the road, all at our expense. Not at the city expense, at our expense. Thank you so much for entertaining me and we hope that you will vote to approve tonight.
All right, thank you, that's your rebuttal testimony, correct, you're finished?
Yes.
All right, very good, is there anything the staff would like to add for rebuttal or cross?
Not rebuttal so much as a clarification, I mean, Mr. Schiller, um, said that staff recommended approval and, um, we provide a bundle of policies for the commission to consider, so we, we did, uh, we did not provide a recommendation in favor of it, nor against it either, to be fair.
Sorry.
But, it's okay. And also just to clarify that, um, there would likely not be a site plan that would be coming before board. The plat, yes, and that would dedicate any, uh, open space areas as well as the lot configuration and lock in whatever number of units they can build within the, the max, um, that is allowed. Uh, a site plan would only come in if they're proposing landscaping for common areas.
Very good, thank you, so to the commission.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in, 'cause I think it was important, one of the, the speakers pointed out the difference, uh, between the three items that we're voting on tonight. Um, one, being an annexation, when given an opportunity to, um, to annex a, um, an enclave um, that is in line with our policy, it's in line with our comprehensive plan, that is something that we are supposed to do, the annexation. The second is if you annex any, any property in, you have to get a land use. We can't not give it a land use and I think we would agree that the most appropriate land use is single-family residential or, or the low-density land use of residential. It really is the zoning, the rezoning aspect where there's an opportunity for, I, I would say for an opinion on what's, on what's, on what's appropriate. Um, and that is being that it's a quasi judicial, we have to take certain factors in, into play. Um, so for me, A, uh, and eight A and eight B are, are, are pretty black and white to me. It's, it's really, it's really C that I have concern with.
Good, very good. Mr. Burns, nothing, okay. Mr. John, I mean Frankel?
Yes, thank you, um. Thank you, first of the neighbors, uh, who spoke last time and, and this time. Um, it's interesting to hear the, the school, uh, comments. Those have been made, I think, since two thousand twelve, thirteen, two thousand, it's been going on for a while, right? My question is, and I'm saying this, you know, to myself, why hasn't the school board ever gotten involved in this? With all the taxes, uh, our residents pay to the school board? Any argument been made to the, the school board, Palm Beach County School? Ryan, maybe you know, 'cause you know a lot better than me.
Because of the, um, exposure of this topic, um, we actually do have, um, Erica Whitfield, which is a school board member. Um, she is concerned about this and she does wanna know what she can do. If you've looked at the map over there, it's, it's very limited. And a matter of fact, probably the only thing, way the school district would be able to help is if they were to get Lakewood Drainage District to, to help with their land as well. We don't own any land out there. So it's really hard to address that issue, um, of the school, w- without any land, it's gonna take land. So those two are actually in conversation now, Lakewood Drainage District and the school district. Now, this has been going on for well over a decade.
Yeah.
Right, so it's long overdue, but I do know that those two, there's no reason right now for the city to get involved, because if they aren't willing to utilize their land, right, then there's, there's really no reason for, for, for us to get involved. So, we'll see how that conversation goes, but I'm only bringing that up because you asked.
Sure, and, and I appreciate that, because obviously the traffic, the cars stacked, that's been a problem forever. The, the school buses going in the wrong lanes, that's even more egregious to me. I mean, the, the school, if I had a child on one of those buses, I, I would be going crazy.
Sure.
Um, but, I, I, the density for me is, you know, obviously, as, as Mr. Boylston stated, I, I don't, I don't see it as a very intense project, so I, I will be in support of all three.
Thank you.
And we will, should take up, obviously, the other things going forward separately though.
Mr. Long?
Um, I would like to hear from our, our city engineer, uh, if possible, just to comment on whether the nine and ten-foot travel lanes, um, are appropriate for, uh, one thirty-third road south.
Sure, Patrick Figueroa, city engineer. So, for the very low-volume residential road that is one hundred and thirty-third road south, it is compliant with the guidelines as set forth by the state in their green book and Ashto in their design manual. And, um, ah, jeez, it's NCRHP or NRCHP, I can never remember. Either way, uh, they're very low-volume residential roads and nine feet is the standard for very low-volume residential roads. Uh, they're, as was stated in the presentation, even at the peak hour, you're looking at approximately a car going by every one point two minutes. That is a very low-volume road. So, and it is just, to be fair, the area of the choke point adjacent to the existing single-family residential property. It will be normal in front of the proposed developed properties. Okay, where there'll be fifty feet of right-of-way. This is just a twenty-five-foot piece of right-of-way. Uh, it's not the only place in the city where there's been a hitch in the right-of-way giddy up, as it were. So, as was stated, uh, in the northwest neighborhood, there's one or two segments of road that have this exact same issue. And, that is an acceptable national standard, nine feet on a low-volume, low-speed. And this is a, all our residential streets are twenty-five miles an hour, so they're all technically low-volume residential roads. And nine feet is appropriate when there are other constraints. And other constraints as defined would be the maximum amount of right-of-way available is only twenty-five feet. In that twenty-five feet, there needs to be provision of utilities. There are overhead utilities on the south side of this right-of-way corridor. So, two feet for the poles to exist. We absolutely want a sidewalk, so the minimum width of sidewalk is five feet. So out of our twenty-five feet, we've lost five and two, seven, so what's left? Um, is two nine-foot lanes at eighteen feet.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Chief Tommy, uh, would you mind, uh, reflecting on the issue of accessibility for our, our fire vehicles on one thirty-third road south?
Chief, are you sworn in?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Uh, good evening again, Chief Tommy, uh, your fire chief. Um, as far as, uh, our getting our vehicles off of Barwick onto one thirty-third, there is no issue with that. The turning radius meets what we need to do to turn our big trucks into there. As far as one thirty-third being a fire access road for this particular project, it is not considered a fire access road. The fire access road for this particular project will be the road that they're gonna put down the middle that we can access the homes on the front, it's all front that road going down the center. They won't front one thirty-third.
Okay, thank you. So, um, what I've heard here is, according to staff, this project meets all of our, all of our required findings of consistency, concurrency, compatibility and compliance. Nine and ten-foot lanes are acceptable per our code and confirmed by our city engineer as being appropriate for this road. Um, our fire chief has just said, there's not gonna be an accessibility issue here. You know, we've talked about the fact that they are creating a safer roadway and adding new infrastructure to our city that doesn't exist, safer than it currently is. Um, the annexation, like you said, is a no-brainer, that brings, that, that's per our comprehensive plan, that brings more tax base into our city. The only thing I wanted to ask is, if there was any issue, are we able to deed restrict the amount of homes being built to, to sixteen?
We've already answered that.
We can't do that?
Well, Mr. Schiller seems to think so, but I don't, I don't believe you can. You can't condition a rezoning, which is essentially what he's doing, so I would say no.
Later in the process, would be able to do that?
Through the plat process, you can potentially do that, but not, not today.
Okay, so before the final decisions made, we'll have the ability to deed restrict it to sixteen homes?
May, may I just confirm on the record that we, uh, a hundred percent absolutely intend to do that?
Okay. Um, based on all the things I just mentioned, I will be in support of all three items, thank you.
All right, and, um, I won't. Uh, surprise, surprise. Um, but anyway, um, annexing this property, obviously, that's what we want to do. However, I think that when we're annexing something, we've gotta make sure that it is, um, we have the existing infrastructure to be able to support it. The fact that we are actually asking for the properties that are down the way, not at the choke point, but down the way for that extra twenty-five feet, it says everything that I need to know about whether or not we should be really doing this. Unless we can get that access going all the way to, um, all the way to Barwick, I can't support that. I, because at, at the, at the most traffic-heavy spot, we are actually at the narrowest spot. Um, in addition to that, we have watched, and I am a hundred percent with my colleagues, biting my nails watching a, a, you know, bus full of kids going down the middle of the street on the wrong side of the road to get to where they were trying to go. That's just an accident waiting to happen and I remember years and years ago, I drove down there because there were so many complaints about all these kids and a lot of them were latchkey kids, six years old, walking home by themselves along Barwick Road with no guardrail. No guardrail. And I thought, somebody just answering a phone or doing something just for a second could wipe out a whole bunch of them. So we got those guardrails in and yes, they are doing their job, obviously, because of the fact that you see that they're getting hit and the kids are not, which is a good thing. But, until and unless and until we actually do, do something to make that road safer, it is not the time to add more traffic to the road, it's just not. In addition to that, when we talked about the, um, the R one versus, uh, R one A versus R one triple A, it is not about stepping down. That's what, one of the, one of the, that's what Neil Schiller came up and said, we're stepping it down. That's not what the rule is. The rule is the most restrictive, not what's next door or across the street. It's the most restrictive in that area. This is not the most restrictive. So to me, that's going in the wrong direction. And the zoning, obviously, I, I, you know, the others don't come together, this doesn't come, that doesn't come together for me either, so I can't, you know... So I can't, you know, with a conscience, say yes to this. I just can't. So I know you've got the support, so I don't want to belabor it any longer. We can go ahead and just, and each one of them, each of these ordinance has to be named separately and in order to be able to pass.
Just, just to ask, the land use is the most restrictive. It was the zoning that you're saying is not the most.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to clear that. Okay. Motion to approve ordinance number 21-23?
Second.
Call the roll. Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
No.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance number 22-23?
Second.
Call the roll. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
No.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Motion to approve ordinance number 23-23?
Second.
Call the roll. Mayor Petrolia?
No.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Okay. Oh, well, there you go. You do not have a passing on 8C. That's the rezoning. So it's... All right, moving on to our first reads. And we're coming to 9A, and it has been a long night, so I hope that everybody is...
I'm going to fly through these.
I'm hoping that everybody's just going to say, let's move on to the second reads.
So 9A, B, and C, and D, Mayor?
Thank you all. Okay, let them, give them a second to file out. Thank you, staff, too. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Council.
Actually, we do need to go back to that.
What's that?
Well, because I feel that you have to assign a zoning designation to this. I don't think you can leave it up in the air. The, sorry, just thinking. The rules say that once you annex something in which that was approved, you have to assign a land use and a zoning designation. So I see that 8C failed. I think there has to be some discussion now as to what would be appropriate as a zoning designation, because it has to be assigned today. Unless you want to go back and revisit the other two motions and just deny it in its entirety.
No, I think, I think just my issue is, in regards to the zoning, is that if we're going to zone it, it should be the minimum density. And listen, I know it's only a difference of six homes, right? But that's a 60% increase. And until some of these issues are addressed, from the school issue...
So that's an R1 double, AAA?
AAA. Till the ingress, the choke point, that all those things relate to safety, and that's one of the things that I have to consider when making that decision.
So make the motion.
Motion?
So you would do a motion to approve ordinance 23-23 as amended to include a zoning designation of R1 AAA. So from agricultural residential to single-family R1 AAA.
So moved.
Can I have a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, call the roll. Mr. Frankel?
They can amend an ordinance.
I'm going to vote no.
Although, yes.
Yes. Is no one calling the roll?
Don't mind Kateri.
Oh, my gosh! Let's try this again, please.
Oh, mine.
Let's try this again. Okay, Mr. Frankel?
I voted no.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
You have to assign a zoning designation.
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
No.
All right, so it's...
So I'm sorry, what was that vote?
It was a 3-2. There were two no's, three yeses.
Mr. Schiller seems to think this has to be read advertised. I don't believe so. I think you advertise it for a higher density, and so if you're lowering it, I don't think that there's an issue.
And I would have, I mean, the vote happened. I would have argued that if this was an issue, that we could have postponed it again for further discussion. However, you guys have already taken your action, and we'll take ours. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right, again, thank you to the staff as well. Didn't realize that, I think, half the room that was interested in that left.
And I feel the...
All right, I apologize. All right, so moving on to 9A, and I apologize, too, because I didn't really realize that that would be the procedure of what we would do next.
Once you annex something in, you have to assign both.
I know, exactly. We have never had that occur, but I mean, I do know that that is one of the rules, that you must assign a...
Yes, the light bulb did go off.
Correct, all right. Luckily with you. Ordinance number 36-23?
So Mayor, 9A, B, C, and D are all the same.
Correct.
So I'm going to read them all together again, okay? Ordinance number 36-23, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, annexing to the City of Delray Beach a parcel of land measuring approximately 4.87 acres, located at 5185 Atlantic Avenue. As more particularly described herein, situated contiguous to the existing municipal limits of the City of Delray Beach, providing for inclusion of the parcel into and redefinition of the city boundaries pursuant to subsection 171.044, subsection 2 Florida statutes, providing for conformance of all voluntary annexation procedures set forth in section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for filing with Palm Beach County and the Department of State, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Ordinance number 37-24, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, adopting a small-scale land use map amendment, re-designating a parcel of land measuring approximately 4.87 acres, located at 5185 Atlantic Avenue. As more particularly described herein, from Palm Beach County Residential high to City of Delray Beach Medium Density Residential pursuant to the provisions of the Community Planning Act, Florida Statute, Section 163.3187, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Ordinance number 38-23, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, rezoning a parcel of land measuring approximately 4.87 acres, located at 51 Atlantic Avenue, as more particularly described herein, from Palm Beach County Agricultural Residential to City of Delray Beach Medium Density Residential, amending the City of Delray Beach zoning map, July 6, 2021, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes. And an ordinance number 39-23, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 4 zoning regulations of the Land Development and Regulations of the City of Delray Beach Code ordinances by amending Article 4.4 Base Zoning Districts, Section 4.4.6 Medium Density Residential RM District, Subsection F Development Standards, Subsection G Supplemental District Regulations, and Subsection H Special Regulations to provide regulations for the Flow Delray Overlay District, amending Article 4.5 Overlay and Environmental Management Districts by enacting a new Section 4.5.22, the Flow Overlay District, amending Article 4.7 Family Workforce Housing, Subsection 4.7, Definitions 4.7.2, applicability, Subsection B Workforce Housing Incentive Areas, to allow for applicability of workforce housing incentives in the Flow Delray Overlay District, and amending 474 Density Bonus Areas to outline requirements for increased density for the Flow Delray Overlay District, providing a conflicts clause, providing a severability clause, authority to codify, and providing an effective date. These are all first readings, however, ordinance number 38-23 is quasi-judicial. So we will open that one up. We'll do our ex parte. I don't believe Mr. Schiller's going to be doing a presentation today. Both sides will waive it. We'll open it up for public comment, and then we can move forward.
Very good.
Motion to approve ordinance 36-23?
Second.
Call the roll. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance number 37-23?
Second.
Call the roll. Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
At this point, let's open up for anybody who is here who would like to speak to ordinance number 38-23.
Can we just disclose ex parte on this one?
Oh, and any ex parte communication by any of the...
None.
Nothing.
None.
Mr. Schiller, you're waiving your right to a presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, yep, staff, okay. And so now, if there's anybody that would like to speak to ordinance number 38-23, please step forward. Seeing no one, public comment is closed.
Motion to approve ordinance number 38-23?
Do we need a follow-up or no? No, okay, thank you.
Second to motion.
Call the roll. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Next one?
Motion to approve ordinance number 39-23?
Second.
Call the roll. Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
All right, very good. Ordinance number 43-23?
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending police officers' retirement system of Chapter 33, police and fire rescue departments of the Code of Ordances of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, by amending Section 33.6 to Benefit Amounts and Eligibility, amending Section 33.70, direct transfers of eligible rollover distributions, by deleting the current language and replacing it with Internal Revenue Code compliance, to provide compliance with the Internal Revenue Code and the Secure 2.0 Act, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Motion to approve ordinance number 43-23?
Second.
Call the roll. Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Ordinance number 50-23?
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordances of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 35 Employee Benefits, Subheading Retirement Plan, by amending Section 35.089 Definitions, amending Section 35.091 Vesting, amending Section 35.097 Retirement Income Basis Amount of Payment, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date. First reading.
Motion to approve ordinance number 50-23?
Second.
Call the roll. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ordinance number 42-23?
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordances of the City of Delray Beach, Chapter 35 Employee Policies and Benefits, Subheading Retirement Plan, by creating a new 35.111 Biennial Review to provide an opportunity for the City Commission to review the retirement and disability benefits provided to retired and current employees every odd numbered year, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, authority to codify, providing an effective date, and for other purposes. First reading.
Motion to approve ordinance 42-23?
Second.
Call the roll. Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
And finally, ordinance 51-23?
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, providing for charter revisions by repealing Section 3.14 Planning and Zoning Board and Board of Adjustment, Subsection B Board of Adjustment, providing for a referendum on March 19, 2024, providing a general repealer clause, providing a saving clause, providing an effective date, and for other purposes. First reading.
Motion to approve ordinance number 51-23?
Second.
Call the roll. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Okay, and we are coming to the comments and inquiries, a non-agenda item. We'll start with Assistant City Manager Jeff Oris, if there's anything you have to...
Mayor, thank you. Thank you. I have nothing to say, other than Mr. Moore will be returning next week. If I spoke too much, please let me know.
I don't know that we heard a word. Uh, City Attorney Jellin?
I don't have anything unless you want to discuss the shade meeting on the American Legion Post 188. So if you want to give me dates for that. Right now, we do have, we do have December 5 on hold. I know that that may not work with the schedule of postponing and tabling the EJS unsolicited proposal until December 12. But I know we have December 5 on hold. And I am going to, if we don't use that date, I'll take it off your calendars.
Okay.
Can I, can I throw out 3:00 p.m. on Thursday? We're going to be here for a CRA meeting anyways.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
I have a problem. I have a problem, because I have a pension board meeting before it. I just don't know. I know I'll be there for the CRA, I just don't know.
How much, how much time do we need to post it?
15 minutes. Oh, to post it?
Yeah, can we do it tomorrow?
Yeah. Well, no, because I have to secure a court report.
If you want to do 3:30, I'll be here for 3:30.
Let's do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just, I don't want to say 3:00, just in case.
Yeah.
So 3:00, so, okay, so...
3:30 on the 16th.
So I'm requesting a shade meeting pursuant to, pursuant to Florida Statute 286.011, subsection 8, in the matter of Sherman Williams for American Legion Post 188 versus City of Delray Beach 50-2021-CA-012581. The shade meeting will be to discuss possible settlement negotiations. The shade meeting will be held on November 16, which is this Thursday, at 3:30 p.m. Present at the shade meeting will be Mayor Petrolia, Vice Mayor Boylston, Deputy Vice Mayor Long, Commissioner Frankel, Commissioner Burns, Assistant City Manager Jeff Oris, myself, Lynn Jellin, our outside counsel, and a certified court reporter, if I can get a motion to approve.
I won't be present for that. Is it possible that I could call in?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as you're by yourself.
I don't know if I can for sure, but I'm going to try to.
Why don't you give us a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll. Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?[1459.14]
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Anything else? That's it? All right, we'll start with, on this end, with the commissioner, any comments?
Just a real brief one. It was great hearing tonight from multiple people who had come before with issues regarding our homeless population on the beach, to hear that those issues had been resolved. So I want to just thank Chief Major and our Police Department again for doing a really great job in dealing with that issue and doing it in a humane way. Thank you.
And effective, too.
Very effective.
Yes. Commissioner Frankel?
I don't know what the comments were, but I can...
It was good.
...attest that they've done a great job.
Cafe Luna Rosa came in and they spoke positively.
Oh, okay. And I've seen on the weekends the gentleman on the cruiser or the ATV, so I can attest.
Anything else?
Good night.
Okay. Commissioner Burns?
Yes, I just wanted to say that the Veterans Program on Saturday was a success, and I appreciate everybody's participation, and those that weren't here, it was great.
Thank you. All right, and Vice Mayor?
Yeah, the only, the only request I was gonna make is, I didn't know if we were gonna discuss parking or meters or that subject under the city manager's comments, but then I realized our, our city manager's not here tonight. Should we add that to the, to the December's agenda as a discussion item?
It's just, it's never-ending. Oh, my gosh. Listen, I think we have to discuss it, but I, I'm thinking that, do we have to do it right away? Because I, I think we're really kind of front-loading unless we don't have a heavy agenda. I mean, nothing has to change right now.
Okay, does, yeah, does...
We can keep things status quo, correct?
Status quo being just to meter the railroad lot, or just to do nothing?
To do, I, I, I mean, I'm hearing, we just need to, we, it needs to be, it needs more conversation. I mean, I don't know what you're hearing.
Yeah, I, I'm hearing the same, and what I was gonna put forward is some of the things we heard tonight in regards to a four P.M. start time, and just make it aligned with the parking garage, right? It's, the parking garage is four, four P.M., anytime before four P.M. it's free, and it's also a flat fee. I don't know if we have the technology to do that, but I'm not looking to open up that discussion tonight, I'm actually just looking to request that, can we have a discussion on December, on our next meeting, December?
December fifth.
I'd like to hear a full presentation from, like, Missy...
Okay.
...before we really go down the road and have a little discussion about it.
Okay. Do we have any workshops planned in December?
We, we, I think December twelfth, but I feel like there's something on it.
Do we want to put in a workshop? Because that seems like it's kind of...
It should, that should really be a workshop.
It really should.
So, we haven't done agenda review yet, but I mean, that's gonna be a lively conversation.
Can I ask Missy a request for the, in preparation for this? Missy, you listening? Hi. Yeah, yeah, so, it's interesting, because the DDA never takes a position on private lots, and there's a private lot just to the east and just to the west that charges an hourly fee. Can we just have that information so when we discuss it? We should discuss the private lots around it that charge in connection with the railroad lot that we may be or may not be.
More information, the better.
Yeah.
So we don't have a workshop in December? And in January, the workshop item is the Atlantic Avenue Historic Designation, because we need to get feedback from the commission on those incentives. So, and then there are sponsorships in January, as, as you heard this evening, so you can add a workshop.
I was gonna say, we can add a workshop just before, like, do a, you know, an hour or a half, an hour before, just to have this conversation. Let's do that.
On December twelfth?
December twelfth, if that's what it is.
Okay.
Okay, so, we'll add a workshop. I think you need a vote on that, because you are adding a meeting, so if you want to do a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
And you, you want that at four o'clock? I mean, yeah, four?
Yeah, and then the only thing I wanted to bring up is, we had a speaker, I think the last two, two meetings in regards to the Black History Parade, and I just want to make sure that we're proactive in having conversations. I know last year, I'm looking at the parade route, the issue with the parade route last year, not only did it close down Atlantic, which it's, you know, what I think we assume a parade might, but when individuals made a left into the community to try to make their way to a parking garage, to try to make their way to a surface lot, they couldn't.